Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 14th Board of Selectmen meeting. The agenda is 7:00 PM, citizens input. On the original agenda, 7:05 Board of Selectmen reorganization. We're going to move that to the end of the meeting. 7:10 Appointment to Veteran Services Advisory Committee. 7:15 Public Hearing Commercial Parking Regulations. 7:30 Public Hearing Craft Sports Entertainment LLC Premier Lacrosse League. 7:45 Public Hearing Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC Field Motorsports Monster Jam. 8 o'clock Public Hearing Animal Control Officer. 8:15 Founder's Day Committee Information. 8:30 Temporary Traffic Pattern Around the Common. 8:45 Speed Limit Discussion, Common Corridors. 9:00 PM Fire Station Funeral Home RFP Discussion. 10:00 PM 2019-2020 Board of Selectmen Meeting Schedule. 10:05 Selectmen's Update. 10:20 -- 10:10 Town Managers' Update. 10:15 Assistant Town Managers' Update. And then we have several action items. So with that, can I have our newest board member lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Chris, citizens input?
Citizens input.
Good evening. Mike Stanton, Shepherd Street. Ed, I will burden you with this, being your first meeting. But anyhow, Ed, Chris, David, certainly a lot of the guys I work with here, you'll know that, you know, I'm an equal opportunity offender, and I make no apology for that. What I'm here to apologize tonight for is for what I see as the gross mistreatment of Bill Keegan and Mike Johns last night at the town meeting. From where I saw it, I saw their professionalism impugned, a coordinated vicious attack on their livelihood, and they don't deserve it. And I didn't stick up for you guys. So. Again, you didn't deserve it, and I don't know what's going on in this town. But all I know is, you know, I've seen my good friend and one of the best financial guys in municipal finance leave. I've seen an unprovoked attack on the leadership of the town. So people better start talking. Something's up. And it's not good for the long-range health of this town when you think you can start decapitating the management of the town, and not for cause. So anyhow, please accept my apologies. I didn't have your back, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for citizens input? Jack?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take advantage of the -- this process to talk about it. Citizen input is very critical to the town, but I fear that there's been some misconceptions creeping in over a period of time as to what the selectmen can and cannot do, or should or should not do. There's been times when the board has said they can't talk about anything that is brought up at citizen input where it isn't on the agenda. Other times, it's very, very, very limited, when in reality, you can talk about it. You can ask questions. You can get a better understanding of what somebody is trying to say. You also may, under certain circumstance, be able to take care of the matter right then and there. Case in point, when the veterans were concerned that the POW MIA flag was not flying, the Patriots' flag had been up for quite some time. The town policy is on game day only. Now, that poor soul who went home with no information that night because you couldn't discuss it could have gone home comfort in the know that it just got left up erroneously or inappropriately and didn't cover the dictates of the town agreement. We -- just as an example, the number of times that traffic concerns came up about Mechanic Street, and week after week after week, we heard the desperation of some of those people. And nothing was done. Finally, Mr. Feldman, last week said, well, way before, somebody got to do something. And the very next week, in the paper, he hears a story about this whole new corridor, common corridor, traffic studies that have been going on for weeks. Somebody could have told that woman that it's in the works, not to worry. So I think we just have to be just more understanding of the people that bring it forward. Obviously, they have very, very great concerns to take part of their evening and come out in public and state their problems. But I think that the board should realize it has much greater latitude in how it responds. And no, you can't make any decisions based on anything that night, but that's not the point of it. It's to make sure you understand, make sure the resident gets a fair shake at stating the problem, and trying to point out a direction. And sometimes, this just might be calling it to the attention of a town department, or when somebody has told you that they made repeated requests to a particular department or position and got no response, there should be a follow-up. Why aren't they doing it? Why does that person go away empty-handed? So I would just like to encourage the board to exercise the privileges and responsibilities that it has, and I think that we would have a lot more satisfied people coming in on the citizen input. I'm not saying this critically. It's just that over a period of time, these misunderstandings have developed. And I think it would be nice if we could kind of review and reposition the board on it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else for citizens input?
I wanted to find out about the meeting that Mr. Feldman said of the agenda, that I would be on an agenda.
On tonight?
Oh, is that -- oh, okay.
8:45.
Okay. I also wanted to let you know I'm meeting with Scott Austin Thursday at 10 o'clock. So.
Keep the ball rolling.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. I'm the poor woman.
All right. Anybody else for citizens input? We'll go to the 7:10 Appointment to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee. Was Ally planning on being here? I know the applicant couldn't be here.
I believe she sent a memo recommending.
Yep. So we have an appointment to make to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee. They were scheduled to be here. Something came up. I'd still would like to go ahead and make the appointment if it's all right with the board. We have all of the information on the woman. It's Elaine Bagary, and everything looks like it's in order, so. Does anybody have any questions on the appointment? Yeah. So the memo that we got from the veteran's agent was Elaine Bagary's appointment to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee. Elaine is the widow of 100 percent service-connected Vietnam veteran. She expressed her interest in joining the Veteran Services Advisory Committee because she has extensive experience navigating the VA on both the healthcare side and benefit side, and feels she can bring a fresh perspective to the committee. She was introduced to the members of the V SAC at their last meeting, where she was unanimously voted in. I myself unquestionably support Mrs. Bagary. I hope the members of the board recognize Mrs. Bagary's value and appoint her to a member of the Veteran Services Advisory Committee. Signed, Ally Rodriguez, Veteran Services Director. Definitely qualified for the position. I think she'd bring a lot of knowledge to it. Anybody on the board have any questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
Move to appoint Elaine Bagary to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee for a one-year term, expiring May 1st, 2020.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. All right. We have about four minutes before our public hearing. We're going to hit a couple of action items, and then we'll just open that public hearing.
So the first one is a block party application, so move to approve the block party application for the Powderhouse neighborhood.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye.
Move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Ken Fitzgerald in the amount of $1,849.50.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation of $3,519 to the Boyd and Library from the Lakeview Pavilion Charitable Foundation Corporation for museum passes.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of $139 to the Boyd and Library from Archie Clement in lieu of birthday gifts to purchase books for the children's room.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of $250 to the Recreation Department from the Moms Club of Foxborough to purchase supplies for Touch a Truck.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation of $2,000 to the Recreation Department from the Foxborough Lions Club for the Booth Playground Rebuild Project.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor?
Aye. And then the last one, move to approve Board of Selectmen minutes from April 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Under discussion, I wasn't here, so I'm going to recuse myself.
I wasn't about this, so I'll recuse myself.
I had one comment, Amanda, is that one else that I didn't have a chance to look?
I couldn't find that.
Okay.
I didn't find it again. I searched for it and I couldn't find this.
There was one on the finance position, sorry. If I find it, I'll let you know. But it was just a minor.
So do we want to hold off on approving them?
The only thing that I saw, and I just can't find it right now, when we were talking about the finance position. Oh, here it is, right here. I think it's all set. Sorry, I think we're good. We're good?
Good?
Yep.
So motion was made, discussion was seconded. All was in favor?
Aye.
All was abstaining? Aye. Okay. So 7:15 Public Hearing Commercial Parking Regulations.
All right. So move to open the public hearing?
Yep.
Second.
There's nothing. We don't have to read anything into, right? There's nothing?
We have a public hearing notice that was printed in the paper, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes, you asked to read it.
Yeah, you heard it.
So we -- okay.
Yep. You want to read that?
Yeah, I just didn't think we voted to open the session, but okay. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, at 7:15 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, to discuss and consider any proposed revisions to the licensing procedures and regulations for commercial parking. All interested parties are welcome to attend. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Mass.
Okay. So.
We didn't officially vote yet to open the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Okay. So there's motions made seconded. All was in favor opening the public hearing? So the reason we're doing this, it was the sidewalk issue, right, on the rules and regulations? There was a question on when that actually became part of the rules and regulations.
That's correct. Ironically, your newest member was actually the person who presented that for the board back in 2014, when he was then the police chief of the town. So you're actually a good resource for this discussion tonight.
So I guess there -- I mean, I don't know where we even start with this, so is it in the rules and regulations? Like, did it get voted in? Is it -- or?
That part seems unclear because, I don't know, there doesn't seem to be anything reflected in any minutes that said that that was what it -- but the new regulations were presented before the board. It remains unclear to me as to whether or not it was actually adopted by the board that included that language. So it seems that was the case, but we're certainly trying to clarify that and to get that resolved. So I -- Mr. Chairman, my thought would be to, and I hate to really impose upon and to do this, but maybe you can shed a little light on that discussion. It happened, you know, five years ago, but I don't know if you can recall as to how that was, but it might be helpful for everyone's benefit to see how that -- because I know you had discussions up to that, and it turns out that was like, I think, the first day I started work here, my first meeting. So I wasn't really up on the issue at all at the time, so it was the first meeting I attended. So perhaps you can maybe give some background on the situation.
Very basically, we had been working on having a fixed set of regulations as part of dealing with all the lot operators that were originally licensed as part of that, as well as with people from the stadium. In terms of how we crafted the regulations, I don't have specific issues, but I think it was certainly a collaborative effort that also involved the state police at that time. I think Jeff Stewart was the barracks commander and was responsible for the highway safety issues created by different things that the stadium was doing. So in terms of the specific regulations, I can't recall specific reasons other than we thought it would be important for our community to have regulations in place.
So there were regulations. I think this was an amended form that came in on the 14th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that the ones that came in on the 14th reflected the language with the sidewalk. And so I think that was an amended change that was included in that. Do you remember what that discussion focused around?
No, I don't call, sir.
Okay. All right. So I think what we're trying to get to is there was some level of discussion about having a sidewalk, assuming it dealt with a safety issue along Route 1. I don't know if there was any discussion that occurred prior with respect to side roads or anything like that, because the lady who is here tonight, Mrs. Santos, has a parking lot that's located on a side street off of Route 1, not Route 1 itself, doesn't front on Route 1 itself. And so then, which begs the question, the regulations say there has to be a sidewalk. It doesn't say if it has to be a concrete or an asphalt sidewalk, but a safe sidewalk, which has remained undefined. And I think that's what the purpose of tonight was to sort of seek some clarification and to maybe have asked the board if they wanted to try and hear from some of the lot owners, of course, to see, you know, what the thoughts are on this, and if there's a willingness on the board's part to perhaps amend the regulations or leave them alone. It's really entirely up to you. It's your regulation.
So when the -- what was the year? 2014?
2014.
So when the -- that's when the sidewalk part got added?
Yes.
Did the Board of Selectmen, was it voted on to accept that policy then?
It doesn't seem to be reflected in the minutes that way, but it clearly was presented because I actually went back and looked at the tape of it, and that shows that actually then Chief O'Leary was presenting the issue before the board. So, and I don't recall if there was a -- I don't know, Amanda, did you happen to see if there was a vote taken that night on that? I didn't recall seeing one.
No, it was not.
But those became the new regulations that took place, as far as we can tell, based on the record that we have.
Okay. This is what we have. We have a -- an applicant that is in the right zoning for parking and has done all the right steps, but just doesn't have that aspect of it. And then we also, there's in question another lot that's on Route 1 that doesn't have a sidewalk too, so we need to be consistent.
Right. So then, after this issue manifested itself into a discussion, it was later discovered that there is a lot that has been there for quite some time, that's been operational for a number of years, that does not have a sidewalk. And I don't know if there was any grandfathering provisions, or clearly, I do not have the clear history, but that was -- that has been discussed as one consideration.
There was one component of that was the fact that we were trying to keep parking out of residential areas at the specific time, which was an ongoing problem throughout the community, that different people were operating illicit lots, and we were trying to restrict the traffic flow. Unfortunately, Pine Street is a collector's street for cars trying to get onto Route 1, although on game day events, they're all forced to go south as opposed to making a turn to go up to the stadium property as part of the traffic plan operated by the state police.
South on what road?
On Route 1.
South on Route 1.
Okay.
But they do allow them to turn down Pine Street going south after the game, right?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do. Which ultimately, they end up on Route 115?
Yes.
And the sidewalk part too. I mean, if we're trying to keep it out of residential, I mean, North Street has sidewalks, you know, so. And the one area in question is zoned for, it's the S1 zoning, so it's not residential zoning.
And Ms. Santos is in S1 as well, correct?
Yeah.
So it's the same zoning, it's just a matter of being on a different street, so.
Which I believe is probably one of the only residential homes in the S1.
That's right.
Yeah.
So the question that the board struggled with at the last time, because the language says that there shall be a sidewalk, but it doesn't define the term sidewalk. And I think that was something that the board struggled with at the time, and on the very literal reading of the term sidewalk, that was, that could mean anything from a sidewalk that has, that allows for safe passage, or it could be one that is paved or concrete, or it could be stone dust. It depends upon which area, what, you know, any definition could apply, but I don't know what was contemplated when the term sidewalk was introduced. That's the one thing, and I don't know if anybody has any history about that.
Well, one of the big issues was trying to keep people on the sidewalks, going from wherever they were parking their vehicles to the stadium, and making sure that we didn't have people going onto the roadways that would put themselves and the traveling public at risk.
Correct.
And it goes back to the fact of, in the early '80s, having Dimitri having an unofficial parking lot that he would give you a ham sandwich for $10, and you could park at his And, you know, they had no sidewalks at that point in time, so people were coming down the side of the roadway. And at the same time, you had motor vehicles traveling, sometimes by impaired drivers, leaving the whole facility. So I think that was the purpose of it, that with the reconstruction or construction of the new facility, there was an extra effort put on to put sidewalks on that roadway so that it would have access to the parking lots that were created along Route 1 itself.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you and the rest of the board members as to how you want to proceed with this, but I think that, as I recall, that was the discussion point that you focused on the last time this matter came before you.
Yep.
I mean, I have some thoughts, if you want.
Yeah.
I don't know if we want to just start. I mean, I went out and I drove by the lot in question on Route 1 and Ms. Santos's property, and, you know, absent from the fact that one is on Route 1 and one is on Pine Street, the access is very similar. So I don't want to see anyone's parking be taken away, obviously, but I want fair treatment for everyone. So I think if Planning Board weighs in, and, you know, she's done everything that she needs to do, cars aren't backing out onto the road, she has, you know, the porta potty she said she'll work with, the police department if a detail's needed, coning off areas, I mean, I think that we need to treat everyone the same while keeping the lots that are here intact. That's my personal opinion, and I have pictures, if anyone, I'm sure other people might too,
So I think that the challenge you face is the fact that your regulations don't define the term sidewalk.
Yeah.
So therein lies the.
But historically, if we have one with a, not what I would call a traditional sidewalk that is in place, that's very similar, you know, it is kind of like a grassy shoulder, and it's about the same length. You know, it doesn't say a concrete sidewalk, it says a sidewalk to pass, I mean.
And it could be coned off as well. It could be taped off.
Yeah. And, you know, if a police chief or the state police say this isn't safe, I think that's the case, but if the experts are ruling that this can be done, and, you know, you're meeting all the criteria, I'm in favor, pending any other discussion that we have that may sway me, you know, to possibly amend that law, that bylaw to address this piece, but allow us some flexibility down the road. Obviously, we want to keep the people that are, you know, just parking cars on their lawn on North Street and backing out. We don't want to encourage that, but.
I think we're fortunate that we have Town Council here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, Kate.
You just got sucked into this discussion.
What would your definition of a sidewalk be, from a legal perspective?
Typically, we just look at the Black's Law Dictionary, but it's, if you have a bylaw regulating something, it is a good idea to put a specific definition that's going to differ from the dictionary definition, but that's what you would do, is if you don't have a definition, you defer to the Black's Law Dictionary definition. And I know that this is something that we've talked to the building commissioner about. It's not, it's not really clear that there's any violation, not just because of that sidewalk issue, but there are, it's not clear that if one property is not allowed to do it, if other properties in the area aren't allowed to use their parking lots, go parking.
I think the question comes in, so some of the lot owners have paved parking lot, I mean sidewalks, and we're trying to say, well, that's a sidewalk, but it's not paved. What's right, what's wrong? And what's going to protect the town from any liability from someone getting hurt on an unpaved sidewalk?
If the town, if the Board of Selectmen are going to be issuing licenses for people to do this, then you would want to make sure that the license had a waiver of liability for the town, and you might put into the license that the town takes no responsibility for the type of sidewalk and whether it's paved or not, and that it's, the property owner is operating at their own risk and allowing people to come on their property and park for events. You can put other qualifying language into it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible, where I haven't necessarily on Route 1 for event days, I see Lieutenant Grace is here with us tonight. Maybe we'd have some information from him, because I haven't been down on Pine Street during an event, Lieutenant, if you could.
Just kind of let us know what the traffic is like around that area.
So on game day?
Yes.
The state police have, at that intersection, they man that entire intersection, preventing anybody heading northbound on Route 1 to take a left, and they limit the left and right turns when you're exiting Pine Street. So, and he calls for service in that specific. So, and he calls for service in that specific area, they handle, because we actually can't even get up there. In regards to, I think there was a request about what kind of calls for service we have in that area for accidents or anything, and our data shows that it's almost zero. We have no accidents on that road game time, or any pedestrians being struck, for data, so we don't have a situation that is considered dangerous at this time.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps, if that's what you're looking for?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Anything else? No, I think that's, that's good.
So, according to Black's Law, definition of a sidewalk, a walk for foot passengers at the side of a street or road.
And in our bylaw, and in our bylaw, it reads, each licensed lot shall have a sidewalk, shall have a sidewalk access for safe pedestrian movement, so it doesn't get in...
It doesn't say pavement.
It's safe pedestrian movement.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think in that case, we can define sidewalk?
Yeah, it sounds pretty broad.
Yep.
Can be gravel, dirt, grass, even.
Okay. So the way the, the, how they, the parking regulations read, are we fine leaving it the way it is, or do we want to try to, it says, each licensed lot shall have sidewalk access to safe pedestrian movement, are we fine with that?
I, I think we should, as, a sidewalk is defined as...
I agree, you should, you should, and, we had talked with, I think, the building commissioner previously about amending it. It's regulations, so you don't need to have a town meeting vote, if you would for bylaw.
Have you, how about this revised language that we have in here?
Yeah, backing onto a street or road shall be strictly prohibited, each licensed lot shall provide for the safe travel of pedestrians within said lot. In addition, each licensed lot shall have sidewalk access along their frontage, or shall have a portion of their lot immediately adjacent to any public way cornd off with cones, fencing, temporary barriers to delineate clear, safe path of travel for pedestrians. Use of cones, fencing, or temporary barriers to delineate a clear, safe path of travel for pedestrians shall be subject to inspection by the code enforcement officer, fire chief, police chief, and highway superintendent at their designee, or their designees. Selectmen reserve the right to deny a license for commercial parking if, in the opinion of the department heads, pedestrian egress and, ingress and egress cannot be accomplished safely. It's a lot of words.
It's a regulation, it's supposed to have a lot of words. And again, I think you have to define sidewalk.
Yeah.
I think as long as you define sidewalk, I think you're covered. I think, you know, it gives it a broad description, but it, it also allows for, you know, different types of uses.
Okay. There are a lot of other lot owners here, anybody here, A, were on the original group that kind of crafted these back in 2014, have anything to say on any of that?
A lot of us here.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody want to weigh in?
It is public.
Yeah, down in the back, get your hand up.
So...
Can you come up to the table, just state your name?
I'm not yet, I'm...
Can you come up here?
Come up to the, uh...
Get on the microphone.
Ron, if you please. Okay.
Ron Young, Lafayette House. The sidewalks on Route One were actually engineered on the width, based on the capacity of the lots, because I had already given the state, that intersection, as you know, used to be, not really an X, but it used to be basically an X, and Lafayette House paid for that light, the engineering of it, and we gave the land to the state. So when this came about for the sidewalks, we said, how much are you going to take from us? And they says, well, we've engineered these sidewalks, and they're going to be XY'd up at the stadium, and they're going to slowly taper down. And that's why those sidewalks are narrower by me than they are in front of the stadium. So after that, you know, there was very defined area where they had to walk, so Jeff Stewart and I spoke, and I said, Jeff, I want to close all my driveways on Route One, to stop having a problem in front of my business, cars stopping because of pedestrians. And we were starting to run into a manpower issue. At one time, there used to be five state troopers at Pine Street, my lot, and Jerry Rodman's, because Jerry paid the fee for those troopers. So once I closed those driveways, they then knew they didn't need the manpower for that part of Route One, and it could help the traffic flow. So that's why we ended up in and out just on Pine Street. Also, we needed access for our customers. So now, what's happening is, as more people park off of my lot in Seasonal, they're cutting through my property. I've already been notified by my insurance company, that they're considering canceling me, or saying, here's your new fee, because it's now a liability. So I've got that debate coming up in October, because they actually saw these articles in the paper, and said, uh-oh, you know, and what are you going to do about this? So it's more than just pedestrians, it's also cost, because I have to have special insurance for those customers on that parking lot. And at night, it is difficult there, because there is no street lighting on Pine Street. I know the police officer said there hasn't been any reported accidents, I put, I got hit by an individual, he worked for a town, not town of Foxborough, another town, hit and ran me, and he went to prison for three, two to three years, I think it was, out at Pine Street. And there has been motor vehicle accidents there, I know at least two on game days. T-boning, someone ran up and went almost into Seasonal, because they weren't paying attention, and swerved and missed the car in front of them, went up to Seasonal's lot. So it's not picture perfect, as far as pedestrian versus vehicles. And if you go down that street, it's very difficult to drive two lanes of traffic and have pedestrians walking down that street. If, if someone's in my lot, what I try and do is physically, because I've got a safety vest on, stop the traffic, have them cross the street, and wait in Seasonal's lot for the Uber and Lyft pickups, because they can just get in that car, go around the corner, and go down and turn at Chase Lumber. Because the dynamics has changed, you got to allow for Lyft and Uber drivers, and there's a lot of them. I would say, depending on the type of event, there can be as many as 100 people doing Lyft and Uber pickup, because what's happening is, a lot of people are, they don't want to drink and drive, so they say, well, I want to drink. So now, they all go to the game, they drink, and then they get an Uber or Lyft, and they pick them up, it's my lot or Seasonal's lot, because they just go down that street and turn. Seasonal's customers go to the front of their lot and cross at the crosswalk, and that's primarily what the troopers do, is that crosswalk, because they don't let anybody cross Route One there. They direct them to go down Route One. But that, that intersection's dark at night, it's very dark at night, because there's no, no light actually, even on the intersection. There's one light, and it's actually in front of my building, because the pole that's actually on Pine Street has all the transformers on it to run my building and Route, Pine Street, so there's no way they can put a light on it. So even the intersection's dark, that's why the stadium has to put one of those spotlights on that intersection, so you can safely work there. And, you know, there's really not a need. I mean, there was, you know, maybe five years ago, because Uber was big, or wasn't big, and everybody was going to the game, and they were driving more cars. Now, no one's filling, no one, including the stadium. Rodmans don't fill, the motel doesn't fill, the days of sending, because what we always did when everyone was filling, I used to send them down to Greg and Mark at their lots, and go make a right at the light, and the lots are right there. But those days are gone. I mean, there's been years where I haven't sent anybody. So my concern is liability, not only for the town, but also for the neighbor, you know, because if she has granted that permit and doesn't have the capability to get the pine, to Route One, now you're going to have a problem of, because last year, they were cutting through our lot in droves, because she was parking illegally last year. So I'm like, you know, when is this going to stop? And I have, I have, all my customers are directed down to Route One through the lot. My bathrooms, the board of health approved me to use my restaurant bathrooms, that's why I don't have Porter Johns. And I also, here again, because like the chief said, get, the police officer said, getting staff there is very difficult, and to assist the town, I don't open after a football game. I close. An 8:30 game, we close at 8 o'clock. 4:30 game, we close at 4 o'clock. 1 o'clock game, we'll reopen after the game, and we measure who comes in. If it's not a regular customer, we don't let them in the building. It's just way too difficult for them to get manpower, and, you know, nowadays, the shortage of manpower, you know, years ago, it was easy to get troopers, where now, you know, there's less and less troopers, so they're having a tough time filling that detail. So we just close for public safety. I don't, I don't want to use, lose an employee, and I don't want to lose a customer over a fight, and you don't know what people are carrying. So I think it's a major public safety issue on that corridor, and we're like the last person on the line. Matter of fact, the police, if there's a situation, they have to get to Route One, they actually cut through my parking lot, cut through the end zones parking lot, and get out onto Route One. They don't even attempt to go down Route One. They'll come flying right down Pine Street and cut through, cut through, cut through, and get out on Route One, because people just don't follow their sirens. I mean, I had it happen today, a lady fell in the restaurant, and we had called 911, they were taking her to a hospital. The ambulance out there blaring, oh, and that traffic would not stop. He eventually inched his way out, and then somebody, oh, ambulance, and then they stopped. And they had the lights shut, you know, shut off. So it is a problem with, with traffic. And unfortunately, now you got marijuana in there, who knows what they're going to be doing.
All right, thanks. So with tonight, or tonight's public hearing, really, we're going to open it up to the public quickly, but we're really not deciding on whether somebody gets a license tonight or not, we're, we're deciding on whether to amend the parking rules and regulations. So with that, anybody else in the audience where it's a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, it might be helpful to just, to really focus the issue on, the issue of the sidewalk.
Sidewalks, yeah.
Sidewalks, so that everybody's clear in that, that you should be speaking directly to the issue of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And not to the use, parking, et cetera.
Yeah.
And how that affects the issue.
Yeah, that will be a separate meeting. So Greg's hand was up first, or, Mike, you want to go?
Mark, I mean. Just come up to the table.
Keep in mind, too, we're really just talking about the sidewalk part of this.
Yeah. My name's Mark Karins, I own 123 to 125 Washington Street, also known as Boston Business Base, formerly Block Business Base. I purchased the property in 2004, and the block organization had been parking cars there prior to me purchasing it. For 15 years, I've parked cars there without incident, and I don't know if this can show up on the screen or not, but this is the right front corner of my property. And at the right front corner of my property, it's grass, and then you can see the hydrant in the picture is on my property, and people walk a very short distance to the sidewalk, just beyond it. When I first purchased the property, that was an old house with a gravel sidewalk there that went down to the end of the property. I had Bill Kasp bearer out there, I know you've driven through it over the years, I've had state police through there, I've had the fire chief through there, I've never had incident, it's a paved lot, the spaces are striped, I have parking lot lights, as well as lights on the front and the back of each of the buildings, and I have signage directing people to walk on the grass, not on Route One. But I was compared to Ms. Santos's lot, and I too drove by Ms. Santos's lot, because I have nothing against you, other than I do pay a fee to park cars. And, and I certainly don't want to be shut down after having blocked do it, and then running it successfully for 15 years without any problems. But basically, when you look at Ms. Santos's property, you've got a stone wall along Pine Street, and about 18 inches of grass, and people driving down the edge there. This here is about 10 to 15 feet wide that people are walking on, they're clearly safely off of Route One. And if the definition of sidewalk access is going to be changed, I'd like to hear it before it gets changed, but if you look at the bylaws now, it clear, the word is access, it doesn't say that a sidewalk needs to be running in front of a property.
Mm-hmm.
It says access. And I do have safe access to a sidewalk. There is a sidewalk directly across Route One, but I would never direct anybody to go across Route One on a game day, that's for sure. So I just felt like I needed to say something after being pointed out, and, you know, I would hope that if, if for some reason I need to change something, that there would be some type of grandfather period for me to be able to address it, I would, I want to pay my fee again this, this season, but I, I obviously, if this is going to be a situation where I have to go in front of the state, I'm going to need a little bit of time, because it's not like walking into the building inspector's office in Foxborough, it's going to take time with the state.
Yeah, like, like we had said earlier, we're not looking to take parking away from anybody, so...
Okay, yeah.
We will be able to work through all this.
And I'm not looking to take parking away from anybody else, but I did get called out on it, so I just feel like I should speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Greg, did you have?
My name's Greg Spear, I own Pine Brook Office Park. A little history, I was on the original committee, I think with Ed O'Leary, when they wrote the regulations, and I think the sidewalk was important. When they got ready for the new stadium, we actually paid to have the sidewalk installed in front of our building, and have safe access directly, you know, down to the stadium. One of the things that is interesting is with Pine Street, it's a very narrow street, even driving on it during the day, I drive on that almost every day, it's very narrow, and it's not lit at all. And the area that she has in front is a very narrow, it's less than five feet, and during the winter, when there's snowbanks on Pine Street, the people are walking in the street. There's no safe access for them to have it, as well as that area in front of our house does not connect to another sidewalk where Seasonal's is, to get to Route One. So you just heard from Ron that they cut through his area to get access to it, which he's going to be stopping. So it really is a public safety issue. The other part is, if the town is going to eliminate the sidewalk restraint, you're going to get additional applications from arms, you're going to get it from Chase, there's another location just south of there, so all those people have been told they couldn't have stadium parking, and if you think about it, coming from, like moms, they're crossing over Main Street, which doesn't have any sidewalk, and there's no access, there's no... There's no crosswalks where Dunkin' Donuts is to have proper safety. So I really think they have to hold your hat and never mind the rest of, you know, North Street, where you've got residential areas that are parking without sidewalks. So I think that was originally, when Ed was police chief, that's where the sidewalk issue became, you know, a concern. And I think what Mark is saying, he has a much larger strip. It's probably 12 feet. And it is, you know, it's a grass level area to get access to the sidewalk. That's where, you know, the people have been using that for years. So a little different than being on a small side street. And I think it is interesting that when they did expand the S1 zone, that's when it kinda got connected to that. And she knew when she bought that property, that the original owner didn't have legal parking there. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right. Yes, you wanna come up? You gotta come up to the table. It's for the millions watching us at home. It's good for our ratings, too.
Yes.
Just state your name, please.
I have a, William O'Brien. I have a lot on North Street, the corner of North Street, Route One. But I was thinking, when I, the DPW director was there. As far as what a sidewalk is. I mean, the whole thing with the sidewalks, which I thought was public safety, which is paved, either asphalt or concrete. You were saying about crushed stone or?
Yeah, well, in the bylaw, in the rules and regulations, it doesn't define a sidewalk.
But couldn't he, I mean, ask, I mean, he's a professional.
Yeah, but I mean, if it doesn't say it in the rules, I mean, that's, we would have to amend the rules to put whatever collectively we decide should be in there. But right now, it's very vague. So that's, that's the problem we have right now. It doesn't say.
That's one of the reasons they put, I don't know if Ed remembers way back, a long, a long time ago, when North Street didn't have sidewalks. And, and I think part of it was the new, with the stadium coming in.
Yeah.
They ended up putting, you know, for public safety. Because a lot of people were parking further down on North Street, you know, both sides of the street, which was sort of dangerous, you know. But then they, the town put the sidewalks in on one side, which, you know, alleviated 90% of the problem.
Right, right. So the problem is the, the rules and regulations don't define what a sidewalk is. And that's what we have to go by right now until we amend the rules and regulations.
Right. And the other thing is public safety, that is a tough street. I, I have a daughter that lives down there. It's, it's very, especially at night, it's very dark. There are no lights there. In the, under the snowstorm, forget it. It's, it's tough. There's no place to put the snow. It is, it is sort of, and I know the sidewalk, too. When you get down to North Street, I mean, uh, North, excuse me, uh, Route One, that corner up behind Route One, the sidewalk is narrower. I don't know if you noticed, if you've taken a look at it.
I've been up and down.
Yeah, it's very, it's very, when you come to Seasonal and you go to Ron's, Lafayette House there, it's narrow, then it widens. But that's, that's like, you almost can't put, you can't walk two people beside each other.
Okay.
So they do cut through. I know he's got a problem. They, you know, they cut through there and they've cut the, all the details that, you know, same as Rule One of North Street, you know, they keep cutting the budget of the state police. But it is tough. I know he's got, he's got issues there. I have issues too with my, mine too.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, anybody else from the public? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion to close the public hearing? Seeing none, all is in favor? All right, so what does the board want to do on this?
So I, I think, I think we need to get a clear definition for a sidewalk. Something that we can, we can agree on. Right? I also think that, much as I hate to say it, it's almost a different reg for direct access to Route One and that requirement versus what constitutes a sidewalk on, on Route One versus what constitutes a sidewalk on a, on a side street. So I think there's some valid points that, that were made tonight. And I think we need to be cognizant of that, because we don't wanna take anything away from, from existing lawholders right now by making, making the amendments to the regs. We don't want any unintended consequences. But we, we clearly need to define some of these, some of these, these regs.
So, Mr. Chairman, does the, the, the police chief has recommended some possible language? Is that something that the board is comfortable with? Or would you prefer to go with something shorter? Or less, less specific is, is?
Well, one of the questions that I wrote down, like, what, how many parking spots do we have? Does anybody know that number? So the, Greg had said if we...
29,060.
Yeah, it's right here.
29,060, okay. Thank you. So if, if we change the regulation and all those other lots that couldn't, that didn't have sidewalk now, I mean, are we gonna dilute the heck out of it? I mean, how many additional cars would those other, like MOMS is a huge lot and Chase, I don't know, I mean, if they would be, I don't know if they're looking to park, but... So we have to be kinda careful not to totally dilute everything.
Could, could we put a, a moratorium, amend the regs and, and cap it at?
At 30,000 or whatever?
Rescind the trade.
Whatever.
Need is in the eye of the beholder, Dave.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion? If you, typically, how we would do this, these regulations have been developed over many years. Typically, with caucus, the police chief, we would come out with a collegial decision. And we presented to the board of selectmen, it was basically a rubber stamp. So I think it's two-pronged here. One, you're struggling with what is a definition of a sidewalk? What is it, all weather? Does it have to be contiguous to a sidewalk that is contiguous to the stadium? What are those standards? And then you've gotta get the chief's input on what public safety is. So, you know, we wanna work on that and get back to you.
You know what, and, and the chief has weighed in. You know, Chief Baker's number 13 revised, I, I think is outstanding. I think it does cover quite a few of the scenarios that we've discussed today. And, and still leaving bottom line up to the selectmen to, you know, reserve the right to deny if they feel that it is a safety issue.
And in fairness...
And I look at, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And I, I, I look at, you know, what he wrote. You know, the law should have sidewalk access, but also, you know, a clear, safe path for travel of pedestrians, too. And making sure that clear path is approved by public safety. So I, I think he does do a great job of putting it all together, all of our concerns tonight.
Leah?
I was gonna say, I, I did speak to him about this, because I wanted to clarify if it was just general or his stance on this one. And, you know, not to speak for him, but he did say, this is just a general stance. This is not related to this particular parking lot. So, you know, I, I think what you just proposed is exactly what's happened here. We've weighed in with the police chief. They're the ones, you know, if Lieutenant Grace and others, you know, think it's safe. I think that's kind of what we're, what we're doing tonight. And I like this language.
Right, I think the first thing is to, to, you know, make sure the language is what we like.
Yeah.
And then using that language, you know, any potential people coming in front of us, weighing it against this language. Did you, Kate, get a chance to look at?
I have not seen the recent draft.
Yeah, and I think that has to happen.
Yeah, so...
And then the, the moratorium, too, I like that idea, so...
So I think maybe we should get, you know, this version out to the stakeholders, get some feedback from the various people that are interested in.
Yeah.
Meet back again and adopt it.
Get a time certain on that, Doc? In other words, a deadline when?
Yeah, our next meeting.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Well, next, next meeting.
It'll be two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks. So can we get this to Kate and then get it out to all the lot owners?
Can I just ask one question? When you talk about a moratorium, are you just meaning a delay in the issuance of licenses? Or a limit on the number, was what I heard, which is not really a moratorium? And that might be legally problematic?
Rescind the trade.
Yeah, you, well, yeah, you can limit things to certain districts, but to cap a license might not, might be unconstitutional, which I'd have to look at.
Okay.
A moratorium is fine. Usually that just means you're delaying the issuance of something for a certain period of time. A lot of towns have that for street openings and are usually weather-related.
Okay.
But I'm happy to look at it.
Okay. So we'll do that, we'll circulate this revised, and then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
And maybe we can make sure that Chief Baker's able to be here, just in case we wanna balance anything off of him.
Yep, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close this all?
I think we did close the public hearing.
We don't want to bother you.
All right, thank you. All right, a little bit behind schedule, it's Doc's fault. We've got a 7:30 public hearing. Kraft Sports Entertainment LLC Premier Lacrosse League.
Do you want a move to open the public?
Yeah, yeah.
Move to open public hearing?
Second.
All is in favor opening the public hearing? See what the business is in here in town? You gonna read the public hearing?
I just, she wanted to wait until the room settles or just go. The board of selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 181, Section 183A, Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, beginning at 7:30 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, to review the application submitted by Kraft Sports and Entertainment LLC and promoter Paul Rebeal, Premier Lacrosse League for Premier Lacrosse League. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for these events are on file at the office of the selectman.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Phil Buttafuoco, representing Kraft Sports and Entertainment, Gillette Stadium. This is the license for the Premier Lacrosse League. It is the inaugural event for this league. It's a brand-new professional men's lacrosse league. And that will be doing a tour around the United States this year, so this is the only stop here in New England. It is for Saturday and Sunday, June 1 and 2. There'll be, well, as you see on, on the second page here, there, we had, we talked about the potential of women's games, so we have added the women's games now. So we are looking for three games on Saturday and two games on Sunday. So there'll be two men's games and one women's game on Saturday, and one men's game and one women's game on Sunday. This is a little bit of a, a follow-up to the successful NCAA lacrosse championships that we've hosted and the, and the excitement for the sport that we've, we've created here in New England and, and in this region specifically. The PLL wanted to come here on the, on the, the back of us hosting the NCAA last year. Many of the players that are playing in the PLL have played in the NCAA championships. A number of them have played here at Gillette Stadium. So we're, we're excited about being the, the site of the inaugural event for the PLL. We are looking at very small crowds compared to NCAA. We're probably looking in the 7, 7,000 range on Saturday and probably in the 4,000 to 5,000 range on, on Sunday. As I said, it is the inaugural event for this league and it is a, a startup with not, no history to, to grow on yet. We will be serving alcohol. We will be seating all those fans on the East Side 100 level only. We'll only be using the Patriot Place Gate. And for the most part, the parking will be in lots 3, 4, and 5 on the east side of the stadium. And we will have a little, a little fan fest in Lot 4A outside of the Pro Shop, that, that little parking lot there.
Anybody on the board of any questions?
I've heard some excitement about this event, so...
Oh. Gonna say continuation of lacrosse up there is great.
So there's six teams in, in the country?
There are six teams in the PLL. They're, and as I said, they'll rotate around the country and they've got 14 stops around the country. So they'll just play each other, each, each weekend, they'll play different teams and then they'll, they'll have their own championship at the end of the year.
Crafts don't have a team, do they?
No. Crafts do not own a team in the, in the league, no. The league is all owned by Paul Rabel and, and his investors. It is a solely-owned entity at this point in time.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wanna weigh in on this? Seeing none, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions from the board?
No.
Nope. Move to approve Kraft Sports and Entertainment Gillette Stadium event application for Premier Lacrosse League on June 1st and June 2nd, 2019.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead with it, Phil. 7:45 public hearing. Kraft Sports and Entertainment LLC, Feld Motorsports, Monster Jam.
Move to open public hearing?
Second.
Motion made second, all is in favor? Aye.
The board of selectmen acting as a local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, beginning at 7:45 in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, to review the applications submitted by Kraft Sports and Entertainment LLC and promoter Feld Motorsports, Inc., for Monster Jam 2019. The event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the office of the selectman.
Hi, everybody. Jessie Enos with Gillette Stadium, Kraft Sports and Entertainment. I'm here before you this evening to request the license for the 2019 Feld Sports Monster Jam. This is the same event that we've had at the stadium now since 2014. So there are absolutely no material changes to this event and to this operation since last year or the year before that. The only difference this year from last year is that now it's a week later, so it doesn't fall on the same day as Founder's Day, which is nice. The timing is exactly the same. So there's a party in the pits, which is sort of the ticketed fan festival setup that takes place in the East Club lot that starts at 2:30. That then closes at 5:30, and, I'm sorry, that closes at 5:00 and at 5:30. The autograph sessions wrap up and then at 5:00, our stadium gates open. People flow from the East Club parking lot into the stadium. The event has a clear bag policy, so it's the standard operating procedure from a security perspective that we have. The event is incredibly scripted and runs on a very tight time schedule. So it begins promptly at 7:00 and ends at 9:00. There can sometimes be some variation in the timing, depending on whether or not there are any significant crashes or anything that happens, which is part of the script. If any of those things happen or if there's any sort of material weather delay, but for the most part, this event ends, you know, promptly at 9:00. It's a much, it's a family-friendly event. We see a lot of very young families. We've had a tremendous amount of success with this event. We hope to continue to host it at the stadium. We love having it. It's a, it's a huge operational lift, but Feld is a really buttoned-up operation. They've proven to be great partners with us. They definitely take a vested interest in the, our building, in the community. And so we hope to continue working with them in the future and have another successful event this year.
Stadium Advisory Committee is all good with it?
The Stadium Advisory Committee met John Hardy and represented them and nine of our members present at the meeting with, we had the chief of the fire department. We also had Lieutenant Michael Grace from police. And they both spoke in favor of this event and were very successful. In the past, I thought they had the same kind of plans in the past. Self-director Pauline Zadel had, you know, no issues as long as there was plans for, with the vans. You know, people have the, their, you know, what do you call it?
Campers?
Oh, RVs.
Campers and RVs.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a pumping system set up in cases, you know, there for the weekend and make sure they stay clean and something like that. Any extra food, stations have to be like 30 days, you know, pre-planned and licensed and all that, which is... and all that, which is standard operating, so we were voted unanimously in favor of the event.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing, anybody from the public want to weigh in? Seeing none, close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The board have any questions, any issues with this?
Yeah, is it possible to get any of the monster trucks to go down Mechanic Street in front of Pat Stevens?
Well, before, but now there's gonna be a car, so we don't have to.
It will certainly slow the traffic.
No, it's a great event. It's, you know, just to watch thing, you know, from a logistics perspective, loading in, loading out, and how they just move vehicles in and around, it's pretty cool, pretty cool to watch. It's a good event.
Anybody else make a motion?
Move to approve Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC and Feld Motorsports Gillette Stadium event application for 2019 Monster Jam on Saturday, June 15, 2019.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Great, thank you so much.
Right, next up, we have a public hearing, Animal Control Officer Casey Bailey.
So this is only the second time you've seen Casey Bailey here. First time was in official capacity as the first greeting to her, but, so she's here in official capacity tonight, though. So welcome.
Thank you.
We gotta open the public.
Yeah, we have to. Move to open the public hearing?
Second. Motion made second, and all those in favor open the public hearing?
Aye.
All right, you wanna read that?
Yeah, this notice is a little bit different than the others.
Oh.
All right, "The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 14, 2019, at 8:00 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts in accordance with MGL Chapter 140, Section 157, and Chapter 78 of the Code of Town of Foxborough to determine whether the dog owned by Catherine and Hector Berdisia of 400 Foxborough Boulevard, Apartment 6306, Foxborough, Mass. is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, and based on the findings it may make such an order concerning the restraint or disposal of such dog as may be deemed necessary. Anyone wishing to be heard shall appear at this time and place designated."
Yes.
We need to swear in all witnesses.
I'll swear in all the witnesses. Yeah. Okay. So there are witnesses for this hearing tonight?
Uh, yes.
Can you call it? Okay. So raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
And the Animal Control Officer needs to be sworn in as well.
I was gonna say the same thing.
We just want to.
All right. So you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. On Monday, April 29, Mr. Berdisia had his dog in a privately-owned dog park at the Lodge Apartments. He was the only dog in the dog park at this time. Ms. Olivieri, who owned a smaller dog named CJ, was walking her dog outside of the dog park. Mr. Berdisia's dog saw the smaller dog, busted through a latched gate, and went after the dog. He did knock Ms. Olivieri to the ground, bit her, and also bit her dog on the front left leg, causing significant damage to it. Her dog spent four days at the vet's office being treated for that, and basically just due to the nature of this attack, it seemed to be unprovoked and pretty severe, and some of the damage that was done, Ms. Olivieri did receive two puncture wounds to her left arm and did need to seek medical treatment for that as well. So ultimately, I'd like to hopefully prevent this from happening again, and would like to basically put some recommendations, or put some tighter restrictions on Mr. Berdisia's dog as far as muzzling and leash-walking and keeping him from being able to enter any privately or publicly-owned dog parks.
Is this the first time the dog has attacked anybody?
Yes.
Do you want to come up to the table and be easier for you? Just state your name so everybody at home knows who you are.
Hector Berdisia.
So this is the first time your dog?
Yes, yes. He had no other issues with any other dogs. The little dog started yapping out up through the fence, got close, so I'm not sure if the dog nipped my dog for him to cause to run out. He's been around other dogs, dogs are fine. It was just that particular dog, that particular moment. There was another dog on the other side of the fence that witnessed everything, and my dog showed no interest, so that dog just must've said something in dog language. But, I mean, that's the first time he did it. He's ran up towards the fence, never went through it, so I didn't think anything of it, I didn't react fast enough, but soon as it did happen, I took him into the car, I helped the lady out, I brought her to the vet, I paid for the vet bill, I took care of everything that I was supposed to. I've kept communications with her, we've still text back and forth. She said she was gonna actually show up to speak on my behalf, but she, her son had a sports game or something today, so wasn't sure if she was gonna be able to make it. But again, we've been communicating, and, you know, I showed her my deepest, you know, apologies and stuff, and again, the vet bill's all taken care of, and the dog is healing well, she says.
Okay. How did Deuce get out of the gate? I mean, is...
He went right through the fence. The latch, it doesn't latch completely, well, it latches completely, but it's, it moved, so he just pushed it right open and the latch just went.
Pretty strong dog.
It's a pretty weak fence.
Okay. All right, and you've talked with our Animal Control Officer, and you know what she's recommending?
Yes, I do.
Are you fine with?
I'm totally fine with it. He's on a leash, he doesn't, I don't bring him to the dog park anymore. I do have the muzzle for him, so yeah, he's all set.
Okay. And is this standard for like a first-time offense type of thing, like this protocol that you want to put in?
So, it basically is kind of dependent on the severity of the attack and the injuries, since there was a fence that would have prevented it from happening, and he did not care that there was a fence, busted through it, and did bite multiple times between the owner of the dog and the dog itself. It's kind of a little bit more of a severe than just he didn't like the dog, and so the damage he caused was a little more extensive than just a bite-and-let-go kind of a thing. So he intended to cause damage.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions?
Can you just go over your recommendations again?
Just that he muzzles the dog when he has the dog out in public, and that he keeps the dog on a leash at all times, because there's not a full official leash law for Foxborough, and so just to make sure that the dog does stay on a leash so that this, hopefully, would be prevented again.
And you said, no public or private dog parks?
Yep, no public or private dog parks.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, concerns? I mean, I think I'm fine with your recommendations, so do we need to make a motion to accept those?
It would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a little bit different than the last situation that we had like this, but they're both covered under the same statute, which I just checked, Chapter 157. The one we had previously was a dangerous dog situation, and there are many more requirements you have to go through. This is a nuisance dog, and the remedy is, as the Animal Control Officer has done, order the owner to take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance or harm. So it's acceptable.
Okay, okay.
All right, so move to accept the recommendation.
Oh, yeah, this is a public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Or anybody from the public want to weigh in? Now we can close it.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made to second to close the public hearing, all in favor? All right. So now you can try a motion.
All right, and I'm just kind of seeing what I think is fit. So move to accept the recommendations of the nuisance dog by, as made by Animal Control Officer Casey Bailey.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you to both of you, Joe.
All right, we're almost back on schedule. 8:15, 8:15, Founder's Day Committee information. Who's here from Founder's Day?
Monica.
Come on up, Monica.
Hi.
Hiding back there.
Right up to the table, Monica.
You have 15 minutes of fame.
Yeah, right.
Just let everybody know who you are for the record.
I'm Monica, those are Two Highland Circle. I have to be confused with Two Highland Street, three offices down. Founder's Day.
Yes. How's it shaping up?
So we are, we just had a committee meeting a few minutes ago, and it seems to have kept going along well. It's still the beginning of May, middle of May, so we're starting to see the parade participants coming in, and as well as the field setting up, so I'm hoping for a good day, and a good run with Mother Nature, so.
Anybody have any questions on Founder's Day? So let's see that we have an application for the boot drive. We haven't approved that yet? No?
I don't believe so.
Looks like that's what we're doing.
I think they were both submitted together, so the boot drive is going to happen on, or if it's approved, on May 25, which is the Saturday before Memorial Day.
Okay.
And it's, it'll be the same safety setup as we've had in the past, where we'll have the cones, and now that there are partitions in the road, it's a little bit easier for us to be out there. No one under the age of 18 will be working, it'll just be the committee members and collecting money for fireworks.
Okay, all right, so why don't we make a motion to approve that?
All right, so move to accept public event application for Foxborough Founder's Day Boot Drive on May 25, 2019, from 7:00 AM until 12:00 PM noon.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
All right, and then the second piece, move to accept the public event application for Foxborough Founder's Day Parade and Field Events on Saturday, June 8, 2019.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? While we have you, Monica, what is the theme of this year?
So this year's theme is what Foxborough means to me. So we've done a push, we have little yellow cards that are throughout town, there's some at Town Hall, Senior Center, Cindy's Diamond Gallery, the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center has them, as well as YMCA, the Public Safety Building. So they're four-by-six index cards, and people, we're asking people to write what Foxborough means to them on it. With that, once we get all the cards in, they have an opportunity to be selected as a parade marshal, so they'll ride with a little sash or a magnet on the car that says that they're the parade marshal for this year. So we thought it was a great theme to kind of involve everybody in, a lot of room for creative ideas for Founder's Day.
Good, really good.
And is that deadline for the parade marshal still May 10, or have you guys extended that at all?
We extended the deadline, we have extended the deadline, so we're gonna take it up a little bit further. The parade forums and field forums are due May 24, so we're going to try and push back to May 24. That still gives us time to get what we need for the parade marshals and to inform them that they've won.
Okay, great, good news.
Good question.
Anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, thanks.
Appreciate all your hard work on this.
Thanks, Monica.
Thanks, looking forward to the day.
All right, now we're officially ahead of schedule. Temporary traffic pattern around the Common. Come on up, Chris, this is gonna be interesting.
For the record, I don't like it.
He hasn't even told us what he's gonna do yet. Just introduce yourselves and everybody else you got with you, Chris.
Sure thing. My name's Chris Gallagher, I'm the town engineer, and I have Tim Thompson with me from Park Corp Engineering. Hopefully, that's going on a second. Just a quick introduction, I think everybody's familiar with the Common and the traffic pattern around the Common. There's been a number of discussions over the last few years about, can it be improved? We've started to see a long queue, since they started, I think, for probably decades, there's been a long queue on Main Street, sometimes all the way up to Dairy Queen in the afternoon. The exit from the inside lane onto Coacassett, Central, and Mechanic Street is an ongoing issue where, you know, nobody's using directionals, they just go. So, over the last couple of years, we've, over the last couple of months, we've been talking about, what can we do to make that better? Park Corp has done some traffic counts and traffic studies for us out there. Serp Head did a study, 140 from Foxborough all the way down to Norton, and tonight, we'd just like to present an idea for a 30-day trial of what we think is our compilation of best ideas for the different intersections going around the Common. I'm gonna see if I can get this on. Just so we know, that HDMI does not connect anything.
All right, we backed up to Dairy Queen, right? Dairy Queen.
Either is that one.
Accord it.
Technical difficulties.
I think it was the fact that we were ahead of schedule threw me off.
Yeah, you still have two more minutes before we start.
No, it should pull a screen up.
The brains.
The expert.
This one? Is this shit for a real? I don't know. What do we ask, how many engineers does it take? All right.
All right. Good job, Amanda.
I haven't connected to that someone, I'm an engineer, I don't want to put one more into the problem.
Did you adjust the lights, Chris?
Um, yeah, it's a little light, if you'd like to. Do you want me to take it over for you, Chris? Um, yeah.
What do we ask, how many engineers does it take?
All right.
All right. Good job, Amanda.
I haven't connected to that something, I'm an engineer, I don't want to put one more into the problem.
Yeah, it's a little light, if you'd like to. Do you want me to take it over for you, Chris? Um, yeah. I did the hard part.
That's good, Bill.
So again, my name is Tim Thompson, I'm a traffic engineer with Park Corporation. And over the last, last couple of weeks, we've pulled together a temporary traffic control plan, as Chris mentioned, for what we are proposing as a thirty-day trial period to test out this revised traffic pattern through the common. So what I'm going to spend the next couple of minutes doing is just giving a brief overview of what the temporary traffic control setup looks like and how it's going to impact traffic operations throughout the common. So I'll start on the... A little bit difficult to see. There's a way we can kind of darken that?
That I don't.
Actually, is the aerial might be better than?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, I'm going to have to talk through this a little bit more detail since that other plan wasn't, wasn't showing up so, so great. But starting on the, on the north end, coming down Main Street, this is really the intersection that we see the, the most delay at currently, particularly in the, in the afternoons, as Chris mentioned, with, with queues backing up. And really what, what we've seen out here that's causing or contributing to some of the problems is when vehicles are traveling in the, the outer lane of the common, many times they aren't using their directional when they're making their turning movement onto, to Main Street. And other times, people are not using that inner lane. So for a vehicle that's trying to make this, this right turn, a lot of times that they are, they're not making that movement when they have an available gap because that turn signal's not being put in place. And also because the inner lane is being underutilized, there's an opportunity for vehicles to move over into that inner lane and create more gaps for a vehicle that's making this right turn. So what we, what we're proposing to do for this approach here is actually extend this island into the outer lane. And what that's going to do is it's going to force vehicles that are in this outer lane as they approach, the approach to Main Street, to make that right turn. So if you are a vehicle that, that wants to continue straight through this intersection circulating around the common, you're going to need to move over into the left lane. And what that's going to be able to do is provide indication to this driver that's, that's making this, this right turn movement, that a vehicle that's in this right lane, it has to make that right turn movement. So this vehicle's actually going to get a free right movement through this area. Try to go back to this plan, hopefully it shows up a little bit better. Showing exactly what I'm referring to. This outline here, what we're proposing to use for the temporary condition is a set of traffic drums to extend this island. So a vehicle that's coming down here will be able to make this movement free and continue down here. While these vehicles coming through here will be able to continue along in that inner lane. So what's, what's going to happen is there's, if you're a vehicle that's coming down Main Street looking to make this movement and continue on around the common, you're going to need to make a movement into the, the left lane or the inner lane of, of the roundabout. There are two changes that need to occur for this temporary setup to be put into place. One is Rock Hill will have to be converted into a one-lane roadway going towards the common. Now what that's going to prevent is a vehicle from coming in this direction from cutting over into Rock Hill and interrupting this movement for the southbound vehicle. The other, the other change that's going to need to occur is Bird Street is going to be converted into a one-way, northbound only. Now what that's going to be able to allow us to do is to prevent a vehicle from coming through here and cutting over and crossing over into those, those two lanes that we're splitting with the, with the temporary traffic control island. So those are, those are three of the, the major changes that will occur as part of this temporary traffic control plan. Similarly, down at the intersection with, with South Street, there is going to be another channelizing island. Similarly, what that's going to force vehicles to do is if you are continuing past this intersection, continuing through the common, you're going to be forced into the left lane to make that movement through. The right lane is going to serve vehicles that are continuing in this direction and then going through to continue down one forty as well. So again, it's going to be kind of a similar setup with splitting traffic for those two lanes. Then getting up to Mechanic Street and Coacit, this intersection, again, we're going to be introducing a splitter island with temporary traffic control barriers to again get, get drivers into the left lane if they're continuing through the common. Get vehicles that are making a through movement and a right movement into that right lane. Again, that's going to help vehicles as they, as they enter from Coacit and Mechanic to help interpret which direction vehicles are actually heading in, help create more gaps, help reduce traffic delays through the common. So those are the, the improvements we have proposed. Again, I apologize that this isn't showing up as, as clearly as possible on this, the background here. Just, I'll bring the aerial back up in case there's any questions that we want to address more specifically.
Can you clarify which way the one-way is again?
Yes, so the one-way is going to be into the common on Rock Hill. And then it's going to be northbound on Bird Street as well. So away from the common.
So one is in and one is out?
One is in and one is out, yeah.
And the, the one-way on Bird Street will be from the common to Baker. You'll still be able to travel both directions from Baker to Railroad Ave. So we're just making, we're just restricting the traffic coming onto the common from Bird Street.
Are you leaving enough room for, for cars that are angled parked along the common?
Yes.
To get out and so if you're parked across the street from O'Reilly's and you want to go down Main Street, you're going to have to get from the inside lane to the outside lane.
That's correct.
Otherwise you're going to have to, you know, do the Big Ben Parliament thing and go around the common and do it all over again.
And make that movement to the outside later on, you're correct. So if you're, if you're in this spot and you're, you're pulling out, you're going to have to cross the, the inner lane to get into this, the, the outer lane to make this movement onto Main Street. But you have to make that, that's, it's a movement that you're making now too. You need to make that movement from the right lane to get onto Main Street anyways, you're crossing that, that inner, inner lane.
And you're not putting anything there to block the two lanes, it's, it's just in, in all four corners, right?
It's just in the corners, yeah. So there'll be additional barrels here, they're not going to prevent, be preventing any movement in and out of parking spaces. Same thing with the, the barrels forming the temporary islands on both of these corners as well.
The one that shows up on, on the other map that, that I have up from Coacit Street, that temporary island you have there, that looks like you're going to have to almost take a right and then a little bit of left to stay on the common because of the parking along the, where the bank is. Is that island going to actually be as big as it shows on this map? Because it looks like if you stayed straight, you'd go right into the island.
You're talking about going up through this?
From Coacit Street to stay, to go into the, the rotary or the common?
Yeah, that, that, this edge of the island aligns with the center, the center lane along this section.
So you would have to almost go to the right and then here?
It's a straight shot, it's a straight shot.
Oh, all right, doesn't look at here, looks like you have to go to the right and then to the left.
Looks like you created almost like a, a mini roundabout.
Yeah.
It's a continuation of this double yellow line.
Okay.
It could be pulled back. The nice thing about doing this as a trial is this is all barrels, so if there's an issue with a large vehicle turning or tweaking an alignment a little bit, it's something that can be, be made pretty quickly and easily.
One other question I had, so with making Bird Street a one-way that way, have we taken into consideration extra traffic we're pushing down onto Baker? Or what are the ramifications of making those two streets one-ways?
So that's one of the, one of the things we're looking at as part of this trial is what we're impacting, how we're impacting the streets surrounding the common. So we've done a traffic count existing prior to doing this on those surrounding streets, we'll do one during so that Par can do an analysis of, of where we were before, what the impact is to Market Street, Rock Hill, Baker, Railroad Ave, and, you know, really coming up to Mechanic Street too. Because if they can't come up from Baker Street onto Bird to get onto the common, they're going to take the left and come up Railroad Ave to Mechanic Street. So those are things that we, we have as part of their scope, scope of services to look at as part of this thirty-day trial.
And have we, this is the first time this has been rolled out anywhere, so none of the residents that this is going to affect, have any idea of this?
Yeah, we had, we had an internal meeting, planning, one planning board member, planning director, town manager. I'm trying to think if somebody from the police department was there, one of the lieutenants. You know, Par Corp, Roger Hill was, was in attendance. So we, we looked at it internally. This, this type of idea has been floating around from various people for a number of years now. This is the first time it's been put on paper as, you know, something we'd like to try.
Doc, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, being a resident of that area, sometimes just sitting out on the common and watching the theatrics that goes on around the common is, is really incredible. Just a week ago, I'm, I'm with friends and we tried to bring up what's the best way to go around the common? What's the legal way to go around the common? And we had five different ways, only the correct way. So I, I think something like this is real important, but also with that backup, I don't know if you got the idea from the police, but on game days, they do block off on Main Street that inside rotary. Usually there's a police officer with a car there when the game's over. And it works great, you know, blocking that inner right lane and allowing all that Main Street traffic to enter the, the common.
How will this impact, so all the parking on Rock Hill is going the opposite way? So we're going to drive people through those neighborhoods and are we going to lose the parking spots on those sides? And then same thing with Baker, all the spots on Baker from the library to the common are all going the opposite way of that road? So with parking already being a concern during this temporary pattern, will, you know, this north side is, in my opinion, one of the bigger problems right now? So will we make that more of an issue with losing those spots?
Yeah, Chris and I were actually talking about parking a little bit earlier today. For the, if this were to become a permanent condition, what we'd be able to do by converting, say, Bird Street in this case to, to one-way is we're gaining some additional space by losing that, that traveling that can be converted into parking. So we might be losing parking spaces along this stretch here, but we could possibly be gaining the, the same amount on the opposite side.
But during the temporary, what, will people be allowed to park there during this temporary time?
There would be a loss of, what was it, Chris, six, six spaces?
I think temporarily we'd lose three spaces on Bird Street temporarily.
And then all on Rock Hill? Because they're all facing the wrong way?
Potentially, we can look at, look at that.
We would, we would have the, the space, so maybe it's just including some parking signs that permit parking on the opposite side of the street if it's just, if it's just shifting parking from one side to the other.
Well, it's, it's the whole entrance to a building though there, so you don't have sidewalk necessarily, as much sidewalk as you, on one side.
If it's one way, you can still, you can still park on, on that side.
You'd still park on the left.
I don't think you'll lose any parking at all.
And have, so I, I think a theme has been when we, you know, or there's been, there's a lot going on uptown right now. Have we got the input of Foxborough Host of Pizza, the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative? Anyone, you know, I know Paige, you're at those meetings a lot, have you brought this up at all to that particular group, or is this going to be just dropped on them?
This is our first step. We, this, we met and said it's very important, we started talking about this. So this is, you know, we, we were listening to the concerns that were coming up during all this discussion and we were trying to respond quickly. Typically, I'm sure, when you do things that are, in summer, it's not as valid, so that's why we are working towards getting some information. And we are working towards temporary. So this is all fact-finding, so no, the answer is this is the very beginning of the conversation.
You want to come up and actually sit at the table for this?
So people can hear you, that's all.
Don't be shy. Quick question though, before you go on, is there a potential rollout date that we have? Did I not read that?
So we, we're looking at starting this the Tuesday after Memorial Day. Probably let morning traffic commute go through and then have all the temporary cones and barrels out in place, ready to go. We said we'll do a thirty-day trial to capture as much of this, end of the school season as we can. Otherwise we lose it for the summer and we're looking at, you know, September, October.
But then we have Founder's Day in there too, so are we moving everything out for the parade, or do we?
We can, I mean, you know, that's the nice thing, it's, they're barrels and cones, they're, they can be moved. And Founder's Day did, it does come into play.
I guess piggybacking off of layers, there a, a way of getting it out to the public, especially the downtown people that, that this is happening?
Certainly, I mean, we were planning on talking to the, the reporter as well. You know, unfortunately it is moving quickly because when we first met, we didn't know it was a thirty-day trial. And also as we've learned more, the best way to test this, I think, that's why we're backing into this date. So it does seem more rushed than we all even anticipated, but we are just trying not to lose three or four months. That said, we can work with the reporter, we can do mailings if need be. Again, we always hope that folks are looking at social media and, you know, it's hard to reach people.
Do you have, do you have a downtown business association meeting coming up?
Uh, yep, on the first Wednesday of every month, so we will have one.
That might be a, a good opportunity.
But that will be after it takes place, so.
So our, our, our other window would be to wait until September and try?
Late September, October.
Yeah.
And then we get into, well, then we get into game days, but I guess we just suspend it for that portion.
There's no such thing as a perfect time.
No.
Yeah, but if we've been talking about this since April tenth and someone from the planning board was there, I don't know if we were, if anyone from our group was there, you know. It seems like it's been being talked about, you know, based on what you guys are saying for over a month.
Well, the actual plan though didn't come, come together until just recently.
I haven't seen this plan, just to give you an idea of how hot, how impressive this is. So that's why we're saying, I mean, we're trying to respond to this and, you know, the best we can. Again, we just pulled this together relatively quickly because we're trying to address, I mean, we understand all the concerns out there right now and I believe we're sensitive to it, but the hard thing is, is that this is all signs of some success coming along. So it's, it's hard to know, you know, what success is and we're just trying to adapt to concerns about parking, concerns about traffic congestion and trying to collect the information we need to be able to provide input and provide solutions.
Okay, I think there was a woman back there, let her hand up, if you want to come up and sit at the table, just let everybody know who you are.
My name is Linda Shay and I live on Market Street, right at where this is happening. And I'm here for a meeting coming up. My concern is actually it seems that you would make the one-way for Rock Hill Street the opposite because everyone at the Orpheum parks the entire length of Rock Hill Street. So it seems silly to make them go around the block and then park on the wrong side of the street. Also, it would be important for the neighbors to have some input here and it doesn't seem like that's being sought. And I think since it's affecting a lot of residents, that we should be able to have some input.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you on that.
And the other neighborhoods that will probably be affected is if you accidentally take Main Street, that's going to kick you onto Bentwood and, you know, that whole neighborhood too. They might circle back and then take Baker to kind of go the way that they wanted to go originally when they missed it. So I think it's more than just one neighborhood, but it is that north end.
Mr. Chairman, I think a neighborhood meeting would probably be appropriate to try and do this, but I think, but I think there is a reason why they don't want to go the opposite direction. So can you discuss that, Chris?
Yeah, I, um, Tim, Tim had mentioned it, in order to allow that free movement from Main Street onto the common, the traffic needs to be coming up from Rock Hill.
But that's a, that's a bottleneck there. I never used that street because you cannot get off, out onto the common.
Because the cars coming from?
Because you can't, right, you can't, this four, you know, this Main Street and two other lanes of traffic coming at you. So people in my neighborhood never go out that way. We drive down to South and up to the other stop sign because you can't get out, so.
If, if Rock Hill is made one-way from the common towards Market Street, the only people that will have access to that are people coming off of Main Street. The common traffic will not have access to that. To Rock Hill Street.
But they could drive around or they could go on granite or like we all do now.
If Rock Hill is one-way from the common to Market Street, the only access to Rock Hill is from Main Street. Hill is from Main Street.
It's really a, a movement that we're trying to eliminate with, from the, the inner lane, crossing over this free South lane from Main Street.
But you are going to still have that, because what if I want to go around the Common, and I have to come out at that intersection? So now I have to cross that outer lane to go inside to go around the Common. Right?
Say that one more time.
If I was coming up Rock Hill Street, and I wanted to go around the Common, so now I'm going to cross over that new thing, that new guidance that people have, right, to go on the inside lane.
No, you'll still have, you'll still be able to make the same right turn from Rock Hill Street onto the Common that is there now. That, the extension of that island from Main Street.
Is going to be the other direction?
Will, will come out from Main Street towards the Common, so that island that has the three crosswalks between it.
Mm-hmm.
Will become bigger moving towards the Common, to restrict that outside lane. The, we will then extend with, with barrels, what would be permanent would probably be some sort of a stamped concrete or stamped asphalt to create like a, a rumble effect. We don't want curbing up there, because we have issues with larger trucks, fire engines making some of those turn movements, plowing, snow removal is, is an issue, anytime you add curbing, you have snow removal issues. So we're looking at what would be permanent would be flushed to the ground, so that larger vehicles and snow removal are not impacted by this.
I have one other question, have you talked to the school department? Because this could affect their bus routes, because there are kids in that neighborhood, all of these neighborhoods that you're talking about.
I think this definitely needs to happen, I think we're trying to make it happen too quick without a lot of input.
And Chris, not to jump ahead, but if we're, if we have you looking at all this, can we extend a little bit up Mechanic Street for the next item to look at traffic there? I mean, if there's separate counts going on, and they're all really, in my opinion, kind of the same thing that we're looking at, should we be looking at that mechanic corridor possibly as part of this?
Because I'll tell you, when I used to come up, I come from that direction when I come home from work, and if the traffic was too far back, I would go to either Baker Street or, you know, cut off, go around the block, and get in the line at Mechanic Street. And people are doing that all the time.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think you're just pushing it, I'm not opposed, I just, this is the first, we're hearing of it, so.
I personally think something like this is what we need, it's just, we need to think it a little further through, I think.
Yeah, like people, if Mechanic Street backs up, people will go down Railroad and then up Byrd.
Right, that's right.
So now there'll be more traffic backed up Mechanic Street, so I think that these two agenda items almost, I know that it's different with speed limits and things, but I think they almost need to be looked at together rather than separately.
It's the same thing when, a few years back, we made a couple of streets one way off the Common, and then it, it just pushes traffic somewhere else, and.
Yeah.
So my, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, again, like I said, I think this proposal in theory looks good, I, I just feel like we're rushing it too much right now, with not a lot of other input. I haven't been to any of the meetings, I don't know what you guys have discussed, so that's my thought.
And I think in this sensitive time, we kind of owe the businesses, like House of Pizza and the Theater and others, a little bit more notice, because, you know, we know that there is some aggravation up there, and I think that this will poke, poke the bear and make things, you know, I don't think this will be received well, happening so fast without, without it feeling like it's a discussion versus this is rolling out in two weeks.
Well, that's, that's why we're bringing it as a, a trial, you know, this is not a permanent plan, this is not final, this was, this is the first discussion we're having, so, you know, if it's the pleasure of the board to wait, you know, four months, then that's, that's what happens. We had to start the conversation somewhere, so this is, this is that conversation.
That's the then if you do, then if you don't approach, so.
I think it's a good conversation, but I think we need, need more input and more buy-in, before we say, all right, the trial's going to start on such and such a day. I think, you know, like, like we had said, I mean, we're trying to come up with a, a traffic calming corridor between the Ahern School and, and the Common, and this, this will actually play right into it. So you're going to, you're going to slow the traffic down getting to the, to the Common, but you're trying to increase the flow of traffic and stop the, you know, every, every person for themselves, once they get into the, into the two lanes.
And I don't know if your company does, like, I know you said the, the person who did the parking study last, they can't, that company can't do it. I don't know if, you know, looking at this more holistically, do you guys look at parking? You know?
We do, we do do parking.
So I think if we have a big problem uptown, we need to look at all of this, not a piece here, a piece here, and a piece here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So I, I've had a great interest in this for a long time, I saw the, the traffic slow down and the congestion get worse, not because of increased volume of vehicles, but when the state came through and changed 140, put up all those signs and bumped out the corners to protect the, the parking, this became markedly worse, and people stopped using the inside lane in general. So I think the start of the conversation is a great thing, whether this happens sooner or later, I think starting the conversation, making people aware, and, you know, they talked about, you know, public awareness of use your blinkers, start using that inside lane. I think this, no matter what happens, whether it's two weeks or, or four months, I think this is a good meeting, this starts the public dialogue, and I think this is great. When I heard that, that there was a start of this, I, I approached Chris and Paige, and also talked with Tim, and said, great, I'm glad we're doing something. So whenever it starts, I think this is a move in the right direction from where the state really slowed us down on our flow around the Common.
Would you hand up, sir? Would you like to come to the table?
I am curious, and I'm Marilyn Robin, former president. And I'm very supportive of creating a traffic pattern that works, and I was a member of the Board of Selectmen when the state came through and made the last renovation to the Common, so.
We can blame you for the slowdown in traffic.
But we can also blame you for creating a lot of parking, because back then, there were two lanes of traffic and, and parallel parking, which was only three spots per side because of fire hydrants and curb cuts. So there were a lot of positives that happened with that also, not that any solution is great, and, you know, Altrax wanted to just cut 140 down the middle of the Common, which would have also been a solution, so, I understand, right? So, yes, that's, so, we all understand these things. That said, has any consideration been given to Gilmore and Granite in making those, still continue the restriction for one-way access during rush hour? Because if not, then foreigner vehicles are going to be passing by Market Street, which has a blind crest behind Judy's Flowers, and everybody would have to take that right in front of Town Hall. As they drop people off in front of the Common, and the kids are crossing in front of traffic to get to the Theater, now the parents are going to go all the way back around, come back up Market to find a parking spot. I really think that the reality here is, you've got to look at the businesses there, and I'm sorry the Theater is on that corner, but it is, and we are, and, and Paige, bless her heart for telling me last week, I almost had an aneurysm, and nothing has changed since then. That corner, Rock Hill, is, is tough, I get it, but that's not the problem. And by doing this, as you mentioned, it's just going to push your traffic problems elsewhere. I can see that same line of traffic that we don't like coming out from Dairy Queen, now rolling in front of Lynch Properties, taking a right all the way up Market Street, and coming up Rock Hill as they make a continuous loop, with kids crossing in front of traffic to find a parking spot. I, I think this solution needs a little more work.
Yeah, I, I think that's about the direction we're heading, more work.
And never mind, your point is, is well taken, they are going to cut out, as they did last time during the construction project, and Baker Street will then be the Speedway coming out, we've dealt with that before also. And so while I have a lot of respect for the, the complexity and the difficulty here, I, I will fight tooth and nail about that, Rock Hill, that, that's unsafe, it's not reasonable, and I just can't.
All right, so.
Can I say one more thing?
Yep.
Just in the open dialogue, during our wayfinding and branding discussion, as a preliminary discussion, we've also been talking about reducing sign clutter out there. So just as the first notice, one of the things we're getting ready to sort of roll out as a proposal to eliminate some of that sign clutter around the Common. You ever drive around and take a look at all the 140 signs? Actually, Tom Murphy and Matt Murphy, they went out and took pictures of every single sign on the Common, and there are, I mean, you don't even see them. So just an awareness of that, we're also looking at removing the one-hour parking signs, and regrouping there and sort of trying to figure out how to do a more district approach to parking, but just trying to get rid of some of the sign clutter. So I just wanted to let that out, and also let you know that there'll be more information coming on, the wayfinding, better signage for parking areas, and directional, so that when folks come into town, they know where to go, they know where they are and such, so.
But as part of that, as part of that wayfinding group, I think all of the recommendations were based on the Common as it is, you know, where signs are going to be and everything, so if this is where we're going, I just think it's another example of why it makes sense to look at parking, Mechanic Street, traffic.
Everything.
Signage, all as one package deal, not as all these different silos, because they all connect.
I agree.
So who's, who's driving the bus on this? Is it DPW or Planning?
It's coordinated. And, and it's resource-based, I mean, honestly, Leo, what you're talking about is fabulous, but it's probably, I don't even know what, price-wise, you know, such a study would be, and I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying we have to figure out resource-wise how to pull off such a thing. We were able to pull off these traffic counts and whatnot, but to bring in a park, a consultant to do a full parking study, I mean, that could be quite a bit of money. So that's why we also just try to like belts and suspenders, get things, and this wasn't something Chris planned on doing, you know, we're busy, we had Matt helping out with parking inventory, we're trying to do it all in-house. But just so you know, what you're talking about is, is great, but there is sort of a resource issue of getting it all done as one driver and one sort of, one cohesive project.
Well, I'd hate to spend the money on something like this, which probably is expensive, without thinking about the other hand. So I get that there's budget, you know, constraints and money constraints, but I'd rather spend, spend the money well than spend money and not consider different aspects of it.
Understood.
It's quick comment. Is it possible with this project that you could start it in different sections? Like you could do one of the most critical things that you're going to be setting up and see how that works, and then you could set up another section and see how that works, instead of like setting this whole thing up at one time?
Chris, is that, is that?
The critical common coming in, set that up, see how that works, all this, it looks great, you know what I mean, it's, it's working. And then you can set up another section by, you know, Mechanic Street, and just keep going like that to see how everything will flow, instead of just setting.
Is that possible without changing the one-ways?
You know?
Um, so the one-ways come into, come into effect with the Main Street change. So if we do that, that larger island coming off of Main Street towards the Common, the one way on Byrd and the one way on Rock Hill need to come into play, they need to be done at the same time.
And that's?
That's part of that.
By everybody's definition, the most critical point because of the traffic backing up?
You know, the other two, the, the exit onto, to South Street or to Central Street and Co Casa and Mechanic, those are more of a weaving movement concern, where people are going from the middle lane, from the inside lane, and just going straight down Central Street. You know, they're not using their, their blinker, you know, they're not, you know, letting people know that they're, and now you have a merge from people using the outside lane that may be continuing around the Common, and somebody else is trying to cut them off to get on the Central Street. And we've all seen it, we know what, what people do.
I don't think it's clear what to do, is part of the problem.
Yeah.
There's no markings on the street, so you don't know whether you stay in that lane or that lane to go down Central. And if you go around, then which lane do you go in?
This may be markings, this arrows on the street, the inside lane has a straight arrow to stay straight, you're staying in that lane. The outside lane has a, has a straight and a right turn, so if you're going to get off, you should, I, I mean, everybody knows how it should work. It's just a matter of getting people to, to function that way.
Doc, you had something?
Well, yeah, I think, one of the things, I think this will, will, will happen, is slowing the traffic around the rotary down a little bit. For those of us that live uptown, know there's people zzz trying all the time to outrace someone else to get to that next corner, pass two cars, cut three people off.
Cross the street.
And, yeah, crossing the street, you take your life into your hands, unless there's someone nice to stop, so, I think it's a great idea, I think it's, it's, but I think we just might have to wait a little bit.
Yeah, I think we could do the same thing in two weeks, and do the same thing in September, and based on the lead time, I think we could have two totally different reactions to the exact same plan, just based on notice and buy-in.
Yeah, so let's try to figure out a way, Bill, through you, to, to get this to the next point, to get people notified, to get some input from the business owners, from the residents that this is going to affect, and see what we can do.
Yeah, even if it's not input, just, hey, hey Sam at House of Pizza, your road's going to be one way, I know, you know, he's already stressed about parking, so I think dropping this with this little notice just, is not really going to be respectful of the uptown businesses.
And should we have a public hearing?
I mean, we probably should at some point, I don't think we're ready to.
No, not.
I think maybe a, a neighborhood meeting would, might be better.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, so can you work on?
I'll work with Chris and Paige.
Chris and Paige tomorrow to kind of figure out what the next steps are.
In the meantime, I've always had this idea for a, a PR campaign, ever since I started working here, is declare your intentions. When you're going around that rotary, if we all just start doing it, use your blinker, it's hard, because it does shut up.
This is Massachusetts, man.
I know, but if we all just try to create a movement, we're all declaring our intentions, let's, maybe we can, maybe we can make this work, so, give it a shot.
All right, so that's what we'll do, Chris, you have?
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, I, again, we know we need something, we know this might be a good idea with some tweaks, but I think it's just.
Well, this is more of a break the ice discussion, because we have, we, we have to have it, and it's not an easy discussion to have, so I appreciate Chris and Paige being here to try and figure it out, and, and for our engineer to be here, so we, we appreciate the direction, we'll, we'll come back with some further, further guidance.
Just one last, you know, when, when we look at things, Tim, myself, Roger, you know, it's the same thing with truck restrictions, you know, that's, that's the big thing that I look at, is if you put a truck, truck restriction on one road, where's that truck traffic going?
Exactly.
So we don't want to fix a problem on the Common, or improve something on the Common and, and impact the neighborhood, so. That's why we, we actually went out, you know, Tim went out, and, you know, they did some traffic counts in those neighboring streets ahead of time, so that we know where we stand, what our baseline is, and we know where that, those increases might come by doing these. We don't want to change this and, and impact the Orpheum or, or Market Street or Rock Hill in a negative way.
But, but bear in mind that any solution that we create will create a change to something else.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's the reality of this.
Yeah, so, yeah. Okay, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Bill, can you get those lights, or Paige, can you get the lights?
It's like the old way.
Thanks. All right, next up, speed limit discussion, calming corridors. Who's leading this one, David?
You want to stick around for a second?
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah.
Lieutenant Grace.
Your presence.
Pat, you want to come up also?
I want to move down one mic, I'm thinking, Roger's coming in too.
So I was asking whether he had this in, it's in our proposal.
Yep.
It's the first thing we should run, if we delay the, the full months, okay.
So as, as we're all aware, there's a, there's some issues on Mechanic Street from basically the Ahern Middle School, right to the center of the Common. Right down Mechanic Street, you have the Y, you have Schneider Electric, you have multiple speed limits coming through the school zone to Mechanic Street into the Common. We need to come up with a method to calm the traffic down, to slow it down, and there's, there's lots of different methods that we can use, radar speed signs, taking constant traffic counts, adding additional crosswalks, particularly by the Y, between the Y and, and Schneider Electric, with flashing rate, pedestrian crossing signs. Maybe we make those, those crosswalks raised? I know you, you don't like raised anything, because of the plows, but, you know, we have to do something, we, we just can't say. We just can't say, you know, anything what we do isn't going to work. We haven't tried anything. We put the toe behind radar speed sign and that works. You flash your, you know, your speed and, you know, most people will slow down. Highway Safety Board has shown that it actually slows traffic down. But absent of that radar sign, people just go what they, how fast they can go. However fast they can get from point A to point B, that's how they're going to go. And I don't think, you know, having a detail up there or a squad car, you know, just, you know, setting speed traps is effective. We need to come up with something that is more permanent and will actually slow the traffic down. So that's what this discussion's about. Pat has been here time and time again, and we need to do something about it. So let's throw it out there, it's on the table. Any ideas? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of weeks ago, he grabbed me in the hallway. He said, what are we doing? And Pat was there, and I said, well, let's do something, let's see what we're talking about. So we waited till the week after Easter, so there was no issues with holiday weekends. And we did a traffic study of what is happening on Mechanic Street. So we did take the area of our concern, we used the Pleasant Street area because of the Y and all the things that you spoke about, about the kids going up there, people coming into the common, going through the intersection, going to the Y. And we did the study from April 17th to April 29th. There was like one or two days where the batteries died and we reset them. We apologized for that, we had three batteries, we really needed four, one was, so we have to keep the rotation going. So in this study, eighty-six percent of all the vehicles traveling on Mechanic Street are doing thirty-six miles an hour. So what we want, what we perceive and what we have have to be measured by facts, not perception. So within the police department and some people argue, when do we enforce? I'll be honest with you, we do not enforce when someone speeds one miles an hour over this view. You can only imagine what we would get from residents if we were to stop them and say, you're going thirty-six and a thirty-five. So we use, this is an approximate number, we use around nine miles an hour. And when we take that number and we throw it into the equation of percentage of cars, that percentage now drops to four point nine percent of the vehicles are exceeding our enforceable number. So ninety-five percent of the cars, we would not be stopping. So I think it's important to start off of that baseline of what we're really dealing with and what we're really trying to calm down. Now, I think, I mean, the amount of vehicles coming into town has increased. No one has addressed the issue that ninety-five, every single day, at four ninety-five backs up. Every single day, and Mechanic Street becomes one of those dumping points. That is probably the biggest factor that we see every day signing at three o'clock on Mechanic Street. So I just, for starters, that's the baseline. So when people go, everybody's flying on my street, they're flying. Well, actually, eighty-five percent of them are doing the speed limit, so.
So is thirty-five the right speed limit?
Well, there's two ways of determining the speed limit, and Roger's an expert on this. This is one way of determining the speed limit is to do the study. If eighty-five percent of the vehicles are hitting that number, that's your speed limit. That is what you should set it at. Now, I know Massachusetts has changed to another option that allows the board to just set it whatever you want.
Not quite.
Not quite. Roger's the expert on that. But is that really what we're trying to do here? Are we looking at the facts of the road? And it's very important that because everybody in town will want the road twenty miles an hour in their street. Until they get in the car and they don't want to drive to it.
So what Mike's talking about is in 2016, the legislature modified Chapter 90 to create safety zones and controlled speed zones. Controlled speed zones have a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour. That's the first time we've ever done that in Massachusetts because the uniform speed law is thirty. But twenty-five is the new speed zone. And a safety zone is twenty miles an hour. But safety zones have to have other things present before you establish them. And only the Board of Selectmen acting as road commissioners can do that and have the speed limits enforceable because the black and whites have to go up with the warrant from the Board of Selectmen. That's the way it works. Now, I've looked at this road for nine years, and there's things that need to be done to it. There's no doubt about it. And hopefully, we start by improving the upper end, the speed bumps. And we need to build, I think, a left-turn stack lane coming southbound in front of the Y to let the camp traffic in the summer not cause the queues that have been caused up there. The other thing that happens at three o'clock every day is Schneider gets out of work. And when Schneider gets out of work, they hit two ways out. They hit Naponton Street to Mechanic Street or Naponton Street to Chestnut Street. Or they sneak through the back and come out on the intersection of Railroad Avenue and Bird Street. And that's what starts the backup on one forty every afternoon. At right about three ten, you'll see Bird Street with a line of traffic all the way down to Railroad Avenue. And they come up and they get, they're going around the common and coming mostly this way. So Main Street can't dump out fast because of the volume of traffic that's coming up Bird Street. That starts the queue, it backs up to maybe Lenwood or a little past that, and then it backs up all the way down, so. But Schneider's a, you know, a major traffic contributor at three PM every day. What do we do with the road? Well, it needs work, there's no doubt about that. We do know that probably next year, Mass Rail is going to rebuild the crossing at Mechanic Street, and they're going to put gates in. It's going to be a gated intersection, so when a train comes, the gates are going to come down and the traffic's going to have to stop until the train gets by. That would slow down this end, but then they'll speed up when they get past Mechanic Street. There are ways to slow traffic psychologically. Pinch points are one way to do it, chicanes. Don't like them, but at a low speed limit, they work. They work pretty good. I put three of them on North Street with just pavement stripes because the cars used to fly up North Street. You know, Mike, I mean, I think you could trap all day up there and catch as many as you want. But we could do something with chicanes, but it has to be engineered, it has to be looked at to see if that'll work. And we do have a number of intersections that are going to be a problem. Like, for example, you got Bird Street first, then you got Naponton Street, you got Maple, you've got Pleasant on the other side. And then you got the big entrance to Schneider further up and Y. And then you got the Ahern School entrance, which is a pretty good traffic generator twice a day. And then finally, you get the Testa Street, which is a four-way. We're going to try to redo that intersection later this year and replace the loops and try to get the signals working a little bit better. But I didn't plan to do much with the other end. I think what we ought to do is we ought to get some money aside because that's what it's going to take to get this started. I don't have a lot of money this year, but we will have after we get done with everything else. And do a, hire a consultant to do a major study on that and make recommendations to the town as to what we should do for traffic calming because there's a lot of other things you can do. You do some pavement texture and things like that. But I, you know, you might consider the safety corridor, that might be a good way to do it. We do have a lot of complaints about traffic on Mechanic Street, there's no doubt about it. No less on Oak Street, which we know about.
Yeah, I mean, you could go on to every street in Foxborough.
No doubt about it.
So the safety corridor you're talking about, is that similar to like the islands that are on Beach Street? Something like that or?
Those are chicanes, they were intended to be that.
Okay.
Yep. I'm not so sure they're real effective. It's kind of tough unless you do it with pavement markings to get the plows through because you can't, once you get eight inches of snow, you can't tell where the curbs are at all. You're in a cab with pile lights up over here and big reflections off the snow and you can't see anything. I mean, it's, you know, guys like us who have done it for sixty years say, don't want to do it again. But I think we need a consultant on this one. I don't think this is something I'm going to dream up in my head. It's pretty complex, and it's a pretty good stretch. We have located some of the right-of-way monuments, so we know, you know, we can put a baseline back in with the real geometry of the street on it and then work off that. That's the same thing I just talked to the traffic engineer about to do on the common. There's a, there's a piece of software called Justim. And since we have good traffic counts around the common and we will have on Mechanic Street, these can be plugged into the computer program and it actually simulates the traffic exactly the way you would see it if you were in an airplane looking down overhead. And I think that's the first thing we should do with the common and then, and maybe in the fall, do the actual on-the-ground experiment. And we probably ought to do it with Mechanic Street too, to try different ideas, to see how they work. But there's no magic bullet for many of these solutions. Traffic is much higher now than it was fifteen, twenty years ago.
So Pat, are your concerns the amount of traffic or the speed of the traffic?
The speed of the traffic.
Okay.
Actually, to be very honest with you, the YMCA is worrying me for when the camp opens because what happens is everybody parks, all those kids that work there park over at the electric company. And they walk across the street to get to their job. And then at four o'clock, hell breaks loose because you've got parents coming both directions to try and pick their kids up and the people are getting out of work and trying to cross the street at the same time. I have a video on my phone that I can show you of last year, and it's a miracle that nobody has gotten killed. There was a police car trying to get through and nobody would move, and there was a kid trying to cross the street. When the cars are trying to make the left, heading towards the center of town in to get their kids, the cars that are going around them are going up on the grass, on the electric company to go around so they don't have to wait. There was another accident there a week ago, so there's been six accidents there in a year. I, you know.
Leo, you had something?
Mike, do you have any specific data concerning crashes on Mechanic Street as opposed to other streets in the area?
I could capture all the accidents, they're all site-driven, we could pull up the numbers.
Okay.
I think we, it's approximately, probably, when you say Mechanic Street, some of that becomes a little skewed because you have accidents on the common. And the closest location becomes Mechanic Street. So you have fender benders, not any injury. So capturing the exact address, we'd have to dissect it where they're occurring, but if we.
That's what Scott did. I gave, I made out a form at the police department and put my address. And Scott, Austin, call me back, and said there have been five in the past year. Not including the one last week.
But I think that would be helpful to the board to see that information if possible.
I did review some quick numbers going back ten years. And historically, we average, going back 2008, we were averaging ten accidents. I'm sorry, twenty accidents a year on Mechanic Street. That's the numbers from the system. We averaged that for about three or four, and we've progressed in the last ten years up to an average of twenty-seven total accidents. Again, their locations could be skewed a little, they could be on the ramp on ninety-five because we have more traffic coming off because it also includes the intersection roads.
I would definitely guess the traffic signal intersections would be relatively high accident places too because that's what traffic signals do.
But we haven't exceeded thirty, and nine, seven years ago, we were averaging twenty-three. So, and I would assume the count is astronomically higher.
I was going to say, I talked to Patrick Murphy at the Y about the parking across the street, and he did confirm that the plan, and, you know, they haven't started orientation or anything yet. So the plan is for them to park across the street and then walk up to that corner of the parking lot, not cross at the driveway. So I did see, Chris, you and I have talked about that crosswalk that exists there. Maybe we can just re-stripe that, it's faded a little bit. And the Y did say, oh, maybe, you know, we could talk to the town about one of those crosswalk signs that, you know, if a car hit it, it kind of flips, either splitting the cost or paying for it. But I know when my kids went to daycare there, people would walk up and down that driveway and it was very dangerous, so they do have a plan to funnel people.
At Pleasant?
There's a crosswalk at the corner of the Inventus parking lot and Pleasant Street. So the parking lot dumps out right there, they can go out there. And that's the plan is to instruct them to cross there, and then it brings them into that back corner of the parking lot, so they're never on that busy driveway, you know, at four o'clock or nine o'clock. You know, you don't have the people there too, so maybe if we can just re-stripe that, something already exists there.
Yeah, it's on the list, we're just waiting for warmer, drier weather.
Yeah, when we get dry weather.
Yeah.
And maybe one of those yellow signs.
But I think Dave's right, I think we've got to look at this thing as a whole.
Yeah.
And we've got to study it. It's not something we can just come up with a quick and dirty solution. But definitely, the crosswalk is a great idea and that's easy to do.
Yeah, and I think as long as we start focusing on this and tying it into whatever we're going to do further up at the common and all that too.
The good news is, over the next few years, we're getting to a point with the road maintenance right now that we're going to be able to have funds available to do things like this in the near future. I have three more big roads to take care of and a few subdivisions, but we've done a lot of roads in Foxborough, so. And they're all remaining in excellent condition for a long time, longer than I even figured. So it's, you know, it's the time to start looking at sidewalks and safe areas, things like that. And there'll be money to do it, so.
I don't know if they're, I didn't check this out, so I don't know if what I'm going to say is right or wrong, but I think that with Combe's is kind of like a little hotspot in the summer for some of the younger kids that are, you know, they can't drive yet, but they can walk around the common. Is there a crosswalk or is there a safe place to put a crosswalk in front of Combe's? Maybe it's by the railroad tracks where that is kind of straight, just something for consideration if it's, you know, there's one at the common, I know.
I think there's a couple of places there.
Naponton Street has one.
Naponton, okay, okay.
It's actually a nice one, there's great visibility on both sides. No obstructions.
So, John, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to. Do you have any concerns about this from Schneider's standpoint for your employees?
Well, you're going to see an increase in traffic as we're bringing people who are used to working in Little Kings Town, Rhode Island, to now working in Co Casa. So that's going to increase the traffic volume. In regards to the Y, the agreement with the Y is only staff members may use the car park. It's supposed to be used by members of the Y expressly because we don't want children crossing the road from that car park over the other side. And yes, we do have an issue of peak times where people go in the Y or into the company, particularly early morning, where people are going for their exercise or coming to the company. And it's a confluence that's quite tight, and within one hundred yards, you've got both of the directions. But that is a concern to us.
So I think we need to put that into the equation as well, but like John said, you know, more traffic, so.
Coming from ninety-five up Mechanic Street.
Okay, so this is definitely work in progress. Okay, so this is definitely work in progress, continual work in progress.
Yeah, I'd be happy, I, I traveled through Milton and Milton has put up a lot of speed signs all over town. They did lower their speed limit to twenty-five. I've already reached out to the highway department to find out how they got all the signs that they got because they all blink and they all tell you what you're going and they're on every street around town.
It's money. Yeah, they have, they have lots of money.
They said, they said they got it through a grant.
Well, you can, you can do that.
Highway safety does allow you to spend so much money, grants, depending if you apply for it, you may be able to buy one or two, they cost about five thousand dollars. The, the signs will go up, they give you a speed, then they give you some flashing lights, they are very effective. When you move them around, if they become stagnant, then...
Currently, it's thirty-five there, right?
It's, at Pleasant Street, it's thirty.
Supposed to be thirty, but there's no sign that tells you, so I put one up, but it got sliced off.
There's actually one coming into the Common just before Pleasant Street.
Right, I know that, but there's nothing coming out.
So from the Ahern School to Pleasant Street, it's thirty-five or thirty?
Thirty-five.
And then it's forty from Chestnut.
Yep.
Just past Chestnut goes out before it goes back to thirty-five.
So can we at least look at getting signs up?
Yeah.
That would be one step.
Yeah, one of, one of the things with the, with the change in the speed limit law is the Board of Selectmen has the ability to lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour in these thickly settled or business districts, which thickly settled is a house every two hundred feet for a quarter of a mile or more. So almost every road in town would qualify for that. It does not apply to roads that have existing speed limits on them. So where a speed limit is forty, or thirty-five, or thirty, that cannot be lowered without going through an engineering study to show that that eighty-fifth percentile or pedestrian access, safety concerns, you know, a number of other things need to be listed out in order to reduce the speed limit below the eighty-fifth percentile. Can't be, not that it can't be done, but there's a lot more that goes into it than just saying, we're gonna set the speed limit for business districts and thickly settled at twenty-five miles an hour.
And that's because they're enforceable. And if you go to court and you haven't done the engineering study, they, they will not convict.
But I think this gentleman's example here is a perfect example of why we need to give, you know, going back to this in the last agenda item, if we don't give more notice, you know, we don't have a conversation like this to know that employees are coming up from Kingston, you know, that's the kind of feedback that's really important to get rather than...
One other thing on the traffic study is we made sure the officers did not do any traffic enforcement during those times while those were out there to affect the numbers, so.
All right, so at least let's get going and see what we can get up for signages and then we'll go from there.
Pray for Sun.
Next week. All right, thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up. Fire Station Funeral Home RFP discussion.
Chris, for the record, I am gonna continue to recuse myself and go to the other side of the table.
Doc, are you gonna?
I have to recuse myself also.
Yeah. So you got the message from the...
Stay there, you're gonna go.
What's the score?
Oh, don't say that. Oh, sorry!
So Leah, Leah and Doc are gonna recuse themselves, so it's David, myself and Mr. O'Leary. Just give everybody a few seconds to...
Yes, I'll do, I'll do that. He's gonna do it himself. Just ask for guidance, explain the guidance. He respected the decision. Because it's a challenge. Because what's happened is that town meeting does not have the... So what they tried to do was direct it towards two individuals. The only thing we can do, the only thing... So I think we have to address this issue. Any guidance, because you need to tell me what you're gonna do, because...
They said, what is this, he goes, below your contract, I'm saying.
Right.
Mine was, mine may just have sold, that's, you know, twenty thousand below the pay scale.
Twenty thousand five hundred. I don't know if it's twenty thousand, I think you have to look at the pay scale to see what that says.
All right, thank you, everybody, running a little bit late, I apologize for that, kind of, there's a lot of stuff on the agenda this night. Before we get started, I just, we do have Town Council here, I just want her to kind of go over some of the ground rules for what we're looking at, Kate Conley?
Certainly, good evening, everyone, Kate Conley, Town Council. So this is a meeting, not a hearing, and I say that because we've had, the selectmen have gotten a number of questions and comments from people. Questions and comments can be addressed this evening, but because it's not a hearing, the selectmen are reviewing the proposals that they've gotten in response to the RFP. They don't need to have testimony and the chair gets to determine if people are allowed to speak after the presentations. Presentations can be done and in one respect, that'll be important because we do have a new selectman, however, he was present at the previous meeting at which some of the proposals were discussed. So basically, what tonight is for is to review the, all of the proposals, they may or may not take a vote this evening because they wanna have time to consider everything. And again, because it's not a hearing, it's not, there, the formal ground rules that are typically done during a hearing don't apply, so it's a little bit more flexible. So if the people who have submitted proposals wanna make a brief presentation, the chair can entertain that, questions and answers can be done, a number of letters, as I mentioned, have come in. There's no formal record because it's not a hearing, but they, the chair can recognize each of those letters without reading them in detail, but can tell everybody a letter from so-and-so came in on this date regarding whatever and they'll be available for anybody who wants to review the various letters. The selectmen can answer the questions in those letters or any other questions that come up tonight, but really what tonight is, is for the selectmen to ask their questions about the various proposals. And the fact that they may make a decision either at this meeting or at the next one and choose one of the proposals, also just to allay anybody's fears, doesn't mean the developer goes out the next day and starts building. This is just the first step in a long process and there are permits that are required, beginning with the municipal conversion permit that's required under the chapter two seventy-five of the town code. That has to be obtained, depending on what the development is, and this is a very flexible proposal, price is not the only factor, it's one of them and the price doesn't need to be the determinative factor, it's gotta be what the selectmen believe is in the best interest of the town, having reviewed all of the proposals according to the selection criteria that they've developed. So once they issue a decision on which one they're going to accept, they will enter into a purchase and sale agreement and that will have all of the contingencies that you would normally have, like when you buy a residential property and you have a mortgage contingency and some of the other basic ones. This one will have things like zoning approvals and what, whatever approvals they may need and that could vary a little bit from project to project, but the municipal conversion one will be required no matter what the project and that'll be the first one. So that's just generally, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but that's just kind of the overview of what tonight's sort of informal process is going to be.
Thanks, Katie. Paige, do you, Paige, there you are, do you wanna come up and talk from, or, and maybe Lorraine from the Economic Development Committee?
Good evening.
Hi there.
Lorraine Brew, one twenty-six Mechanic Street, Economic Development Committee Chairman.
I'm Paige Duncan, Planning Director. I'm happy to finally be here, one way or another, let's talk about this project.
It's been a long road. Paige has done yeoman's work for our committee and I just wanna express our appreciation for all that she's done to get us to this point with the help of...
Excuse me, Lorraine, would you just mind pulling your microphone forward because we're not picking it up? Okay, go ahead, thanks.
Just wanna thank Paige for all the work she's done for our committee and all of our committee members for all the time and effort that they've put into this project. At our last Economic Development Committee meeting last week, we went through another letter to provide additional information to you in terms of a little more detail about the criteria that were used for our analysis and wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to ask us any questions around those criteria. Also, just gave a little bit more background information to you in general about how the RFP was developed and what the basis of it was. And so I wanna ask Paige if you would like to just run through a brief summary of, of this, unless you wanna go right into it.
No, a brief summary would be good.
Okay. Sure. Well, during the RFP, so what we've learned doing these RFPs is just how very important the criteria is. We did the first round, when I say first round, I mean our first round, just earlier this year, and we received just one proposal and that, that helped us sort of learn a bit on how to develop these proposals and criteria. We actually took a harder look at it the second time around and I think we included the Board of Selectmen a little bit more to kind of say, and that if you recall, I was here saying it's important, we understand these criteria because these are the guiding sort of principles under which this project is gonna be developed. So that's sort of what the basis for the EDC's review. And basically, the consistency with the project vision, that was clearly articulated in, in section two, this is on page three of our memo, and I'm not gonna go through this letter line by line, we have a long night ahead and we all had a long night last night, but I think the key point is to sort of, I don't wanna get into the rankings per se so much as sort of why these rankings mattered. And we had a very clear vision that was spent a lot of time on it developing and I know the Board of Selectmen was involved, the EDC was involved, so that vision was articulated and that was something that the EDC looked at, each member looked at individually on their own. These rankings, just to step back a little bit, just gives process, each member was given sort of the criteria written out and then it, they were expected to rank it as highly advantageous, advantageous, or not acceptable. And under each, under highly advantageous, advantageous and not acceptable, there was sort of a summary. So that as each EDC member went through on their own outside of the meeting, they reviewed the proposals and they reviewed that, each criteria, and they did their own ranking. So they ranked it highly advantageous, advantageous, or not acceptable. They went, they did that for each project, for each criteria. Then we had our meeting where everybody just sort of raised their hand, so that we, we wanted to make sure that it was done in a way that each member was able to sort of have their own opinion and do it, so it wasn't almost like a crowd dynamic. So the vision was very important and as you could see here, it was ranked, it was ranked, that King proposal did rank highest. Then stepping back, so the vision that was described in section two was the vision for this project. The B was consistency with the downtown vision and the downtown strategy. That process was done, you know, from year, I think, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve on, there was some outreach, there was some principles identified to how to bring the downtown back into revitalization. It's very clear Foxborough treasures the downtown area and wants to see it back to vibrancy. And so that was very, this was another key criteria that the EDC felt was important. It is challenging because, just I'm putting my planner's hat on here, you know, the hard thing is, is everybody wants, and, and Foxborough's not alone, you know, if you look at all the downtowns around, they're all going through a similar thing, where back in the day, downtowns were the heart of the community, they naturally served the government and commerce function for the community. You went down to the post office, you went to the bank, you saw your neighbors, you might have grabbed a prescription, your dry cleaning and whatnot. It was a natural, sort of, it was busy, it was crowded, I've heard stories that, you know, the Foxborough company let out and there was a ton of traffic last, back then, in those days, so it's always a vibrant thing. As the suburbs developed and people, more and more families had vehicles, suddenly the automobile became more important than the pedestrian and the, and the sort of the people, and it became about convenience. Next thing you know, they're starting to open malls and malls became the new great thing and people no longer really wanted to shop downtown because it was kind of a headache, you know, you had to get a parking spot, the prices might not be as good, so now everybody started going to malls. And that's sort of when downtown started to change and it's been going on a lot. So I just wanna point out that this is a dynamic, much to the, the rotary traffic patterns, this is a dynamic that's gonna have to change socially in Foxborough. Folks are gonna have to commit to going downtown, they're gonna have to commit to walking a thousand to fifteen hundred feet to get to their store, their place, you know, people are gonna have to be downtown for businesses to come downtown. So I'm carrying on, I'm not gonna do that anymore, but that's why this downtown vision was so important is, it will represent change and it is a challenge and we are having some challenges with some parking challenges and whatnot, but it's, if we leave it to the way it's been, it's gonna stay the way it is. And from what we heard from the people during the master plan process, that's not what folks want. So that's sort of the connection of why this EDC is sort of taking the approach of, we need some density, we need some activity downtown. Qualifications of project team, keep it moving, again, that was important, this is a challenging project, we know the fire station is a challenging building, it's got, you know, we don't even wanna know really what's going on there, so we need a developer who's gonna be able to come in and, and be able to roll with the punches, have history there, so that was something that was very important to the EDC, to make sure that whoever got in there is gonna have the resources and the experience to be sure that they're able to handle a very challenging project with probably challenging construction conditions. And feasibility and financing, again, we've been through this for how many years, folks really wanna take advantage of the current economy and get something activated out there now. We're so thrilled to see the, the former Orpheum, the Marrow and Rodman Center doing so well, it's drawing people downtown, but we know there's a need for folks to go to the restaurant that's not going to be next door. Whomever, whatever restaurant it is, we know we want one there, we know the community's ready for it. So that was something, we want that to happen first. We've been told throughout that the hardest part about these developments is sort of the retail space. The housing's gonna sell itself, Foxborough's very desirable, everybody wants to come here, live here. A downtown location is unique in this area, it's going to be very highly desirable for certain people, but it is important, so we've got to just keep this, keep going and keep this project going, we need to make sure that that space is filled with a viable business that's going to succeed tomorrow, not, you know, in a year, whatever, we want a very strong tenant in there. And then lastly, project timing, as we said, timing is the essence, we wanted to make sure that this project wasn't going to drag out another couple of years. Little did we know, we'd be delaying it on our own. Little did we know, we'd be delaying it on our own, but, and then lastly, we want to also make sure it's clear that we did not get into the price part of it. We didn't have a clear criteria stipulated in our proposal. We did segue a little to into that in our discussion, and we quickly caught ourselves at the EDC level, because we realized we didn't have a clear criteria outlined. So that's something the Board of Selectmen want to take a look at on their own. That said, the EDC did want to be sure to call out the tax revenue back to the town, anticipated, and also, I know they were talking about the fact that the town had spent some money on sewer and whatnot. So trying to just be aware of the financial considerations. So the bottom line is, the EDC just wants what's best for the town. And I mean, there's different ways of doing it, but we want a project out there that's going to add people to live in the downtown area, and also to bring a viable commercial entity that will further anchor the business community out there. I think that's it. Sorry, I went on so long.
We've also had some discussions about parking issues, and there was a count that was done by your intern, right?
Yes, yes. And I didn't put that out only because it hasn't been fully vetted, the parking counts, but-
Is that parking spot counts?
Parking spots, and it was, it's a raw number. Matt Murphy's here, he's a high school senior, and he's doing senior project. He went out and counted all the parking spaces in the downtown, including private. So that's the thing, we, I haven't gone out and verified them, so we don't want to, but it was over a thousand parking spaces. Now, you know, three hundred something were public, and the rest were private. So we do, we are aware of that, but the point being is, there is parking out there, and now it's how to manage it, how to sort of take a district approach. And the good thing is, we have a little time to deal with that. But the EDC did decide, we had it in our memo, originally we were getting into parking and density, and we actually ended up going back to the criteria, because the group felt that that was really what was germane to this, and that's what was germane to your, you know, what you needed from the EDC.
Okay. All right, thanks. So I think what we'll do is, we'll give each, each of the bidders like ten minutes, just to refresh us on their proposal. One thing I do want to throw out there, and it was the first that we heard of it tonight as a board, you know, when you guys bid on this, Rock Hill Street was two ways, and now there's a proposal potentially down the road to make that a one-way. So, I mean, I don't know if that affects anything that you guys are bidding on. We're not voting on that yet, it's down the road, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. It was, again, first we heard of it as a board tonight, so, you know, when you bid on this, Rock Hill was a two-way street, and by the time you start construction, who knows, it might be a one-way.
That could potentially create more parking spots on the street.
Yeah, it could. So, I just, I wasn't, I don't know if you guys, any of you were here for that part of the proposal, so I just wanted to throw that out there. So I think with that, if we go the same order as we did the last time we did it, I believe you guys were first.
Sure.
So we'll try to keep it at-
I have a question.
Yeah.
It was, there was a lot of questions that started at the end of the last proposal, and the King team had the advantage of being at the microphones. Could we bring all teams up to be able to answer questions when that starts?
Oh yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, and I think, I don't know, maybe we just go through the proposals, and then ask the questions at the end, save all the questions, and ask them all at once, and can have people from each, you know. Just let everybody know who you are, and-
Sure.
Hopefully we can get that working.
I don't know. I just plugged in, so if that works, great.
Amanda?
Plug it to the wall.
To the wall.
The wall. Was that Chris, the D-Ticker's computer?
No, I think it might be.
Ricky, you left it.
Maybe it's just very worn, they get up there.
Is that working?
Nope.
Technology's our friend or our worst enemy.
Just, I think you had to turn on the, with their remote control?
Yeah. Yeah, it was turned off, you're right.
Sleep mode.
Light came on, so.
Here it comes.
Yeah, if we can dim the lights a little bit. Leah, you want to handle the lights?
Just trim those lights a little bit, please, thanks. Right, thank you.
All right, again, just a quick abbreviated presentation.
Sure. And I'm not sure why it's showing this way, so you'll see my slide and then the next slide, but, you know, that doesn't really matter. Anyway, I'm Matt Zoller, I'm Principal of MPZ Development. My partner, Dave Tregorth, couldn't be here this evening, he was at an alternate hearing for another project, so he apologizes. But we're here tonight for you guys to answer questions about our proposal and talk about it in detail. So we're really excited, again, to be here for this opportunity. I did have a modification to our presentation related to our site plan, which I'll get to, because we hadn't had access to the survey when we initially made our proposal, so I made some changes. So, you know, overview, development team. Bottom line, Dave and I have a lot of experience doing mixed-use development across the Commonwealth at scale and not at scale. In Haverhill, eighteen units, mixed-use, mixed-income, mill redevelopment. Here's the Mosaic, which is a Longwood Medical Center downtown Boston, over a hundred and sixty units there, mixed income with eight thousand square feet of ground floor retail. Here's the Box District in Chelsea, where Dave's had great success doing work. JM Loss in Haverhill, another project that's currently ongoing, it's about thirty units, mixed income with ground floor retail. And then Redding, a forty R project that Dave's currently getting financed and working on. And this is a project that I'm working on in Bridgewater, which we just received a forty V permit for. Very excited about this, fifty-seven units of mixed-income housing. So a lot of experience across the spectrum with state and public financing sources. So we're really adept at using different tax credits and public subsidies to make these projects come to fruition, because they're expensive and they're complicated. There's no doubt about it. So, and your project is no different. So, a little bit about retail development. It's hard in neighborhoods, as you heard Paige say. You know, you're betting on a retailer that either has one store, or, you know, maybe two, and that's their lifeblood, is the operations of that business. They're not in the business of real estate. So, here's a couple of examples of the companies that we've worked with. Small coffee shops, restaurants, wine and cheese stores, you know, all great uses, and every community wants these uses. But they're hard to get, and you have to make real concessions on the real estate side to allow them to come into the buildings and the redevelopment. So, and this is just a sampling of those that I was just speaking to. So, again, these are those challenges that I was talking about, you know, services, capital requirements of those businesses, just a summary of that. All right, so let's get to the project. So when we were here last, we omitted, or we actually included Parcel B on the survey, which was about two thousand square feet, which wasn't the right move. And so what it did was, took our unit count from twenty-two units originally down to nineteen. So now, we're going to present a site plan to you guys. Thirteen two-bedroom apartments, a mix of townhomes and flats, and six one-bedroom apartments. So this was the previous plan that we had, and this is, you know, Parcel B, and now we've removed it. So, we've created more two-bedroom units along Market Street, fewer parking spaces. We're still at about a one-to-one parking ratio for the units. And then the building, again, up along the Common, we're proposing demolishing the fire station, and then doing townhome units, you know, further down the street, and wrapping the block essentially, trying to keep in with the existing neighborhood. That's our proposal here. And I do want to speak a little bit to the fire station, because, as you heard, keeping old buildings is very challenging, and especially for a small retailer, or a restaurant, a small restaurant. So, building a new building, you can really create something for that use that makes sense and is economically efficient. So that was the premise of this mixed-use building at the corner when we proposed it. So, so our proposal highlights are here. You know, we are really excited about this, again. It's a public-private partnership in our mind. This is just the beginning of a conversation, as you heard. And, you know, we're open to suggestions. What we presented you with was an idea, and we'd really like to take the time to kind of develop that idea, working with the town and the community, to create something really special here in the town of Foxborough. It's a great site, there's obviously a lot of history here, we want to embrace that, and we think we could do that well. And, you know, unlike some of the other proponents, you know, we bring an outside lens here, and I think that could be beneficial to you. So, that's our proposal, and we can do questions now, or at the end?
I think we'll probably do them all at the end, makes it easier.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Team Gibson?
All right, good evening. Thanks for coming back.
Thank you for having us. We're very excited about doing this redevelopment of the fire station and the former funeral home, and we want to work diligently with the town of Foxborough in the design and the development of Fire Station One and the former funeral home. My team has formulated a comprehensive development plan that the town of Foxborough and our development management team will be proud of. There'll be a forty-six-hundred-square-foot restaurant, craft beer brewery that is presently in one of our buildings in Eastern Shovel Town Brewery. And as Paige talked about earlier, and the people before us, it's, it was very important for us on the development and management and ownership end, and also for the town of Foxborough to have an established anchor that would fit into the community and bring more vitality to the center of Foxborough. As Paige also said in her preview to the discussion of the proposals, our bid was the highest score, and we're very excited about doing the reuse, and think it's important that the present fire station is renovated and kept as a part of the history of the past, the present, and the future of this development in Foxborough Center. Interesting enough, this is Station One, we're presently doing Station Two in Eastern, rehabbing one of their fire stations into a Fire Station Father Town, in a similar building. I'm not sure when this one was built, the one in Eastern was nineteen thirty-four, and I think this was roughly in the thirties.
Did you say you're rehabbing that into-
Father Town. We're rehabbing it for the town as-
As a fire station.
For firemen, male and female, and they're, we're putting another, there's two bays now, we're putting a third bay with housing above it, that, because their engines are so much bigger now, and lower in the floors. It's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar job. But the Shovel Town Brewery has been a huge success in Northeastern Village, and not only is it a gathering place, but they have been great in taking care of all the community needs and endorsements for, whether it's the Y, or the Little League, or the school departments for special functions. And I think they, from dealing with them there, they will be vital to Foxborough to reach back into the community, which I think is as important as just developing it. We, as a company, have been doing this over fifty years, and have done rehab buildings as well as new buildings in Canton, Eastern, Foxborough, Rainham, Norton, and Walpole. And we build, manage, and rent. So we're, we're in it for the long run. We like to make money while we're sleeping. And this, as the previous group said, to do these type of developments, it takes a specialized effort, because it's in a tight piece of land, and that, to work with the town boards and the abuddies and the neighborhood, we welcome, on our jobs, we have, once we start, we have weekly meetings, we welcome everyone to come to the meeting, because our goal is how to do it better for the community, for us, and for the people that are going to be living or utilizing the property. On ours, we're doing underground parking on the fifteen units that will be the funeral home site. Oh, this is the Foxborough State Hospital, which we built a hundred and two units, which I, obviously you guys are familiar with. That was the director's house that had a lot of hazardous waste in it, lead paint, and we, the Stark Society wanted it redeveloped, and to the right is the, what we came out, we made it into three units with garages. But that was a similar type job, and we've done those, and on the various communities abutting in Foxborough. But I think that by taking an older building and giving it new life, it's a fabric of the community for yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And I think that's vital, is part of making it work. These are, in Eastern Center, they had, Northeastern Village was in problems in the seventies and eighties. On the left, the top photo was the Chevrolet dealership, Motrano Chevrolet, and to the right was a liquor store, and they used it as a warehouse. Below it is the, we made it into seven apartments, a real estate company, and a pizza restaurant. Underneath it, it was the high school, which was one-fifteen Main Street. We rehabbed that into thirty apartments, and the gym, we made into a, the basketball court, we rehabbed it and gave it to the YMCA in Eastern. To the right, it was the grammar school. We did that over, and we made it into our office, a daycare, and there's fifteen psychologists on the second floor. To the top right was a building that burnt, they were going to tear it down, and so I bought it and made it into four apartments and the farmer's daughter. And then underneath was a building that was a rectory, and we made it into three apartments and a daycare behind it. So the reuse has been something that we've done, we enjoy, and we like to build and keep and improve. We have quite a bit of property, and we've done, I think, twenty historic renovations, and won the state award on historic three times in eighties, nineties, and two thousand, and two thousand fifteen was the last time, four times, I guess. And we want to work closely with the town, and we think it's important to the town, the Foxborough Center, and ourselves to do the best job we can, and look forward to working with you. And thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thanks. Bill, do you have anything?
I'll be available for questions at the end, Mr. Jim.
All right, thanks. You guys ready? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we just, yeah, just plug into it. Yeah. I'm almost a client.
Yep. Right.
Be a lot easier. Plug in, because everybody has a different.
We'll move it.
Yeah, well, I can't, we can't sit.
Oh, now you can't sit.
There we go.
There you go.
All right. Thank you for letting us come back tonight, dealing with our technical difficulties, letting us switch around. So Jessica James with Gibson Corner Realty Trust, twenty-five Camp Road, Foxborough.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having us. Jimmy Brown, Partner Kitchen Partners LLC, Two Vandoor Nav here in Foxborough. Excited to be here again. Thank you.
We'll try to, try to keep this brief. I know you guys want your time. So our interest here, I would say, starts with being, being residents. We have a hundred and nineteen collective years living in Foxborough, which I just discovered today. So we definitely have, we have hometown pride. Gibson Corner Realty Trust has also been heavily invested in revitalizing the town center. We started that in two thousand and twelve. We did win a historic restoration award in two thousand and twelve for, for one of our properties, which you can see there. And our focus is really improving and preserving our town common. We think it's important to, you know, stay true to our history while we really move towards revitalizing our town center. So our key difference is, yes, we're, we're embedded in Foxborough. Like I said, we've been, we've been working revitalizing downtown for a bit now. So we do have past and ongoing development experience. We, we own and manage over twenty-five thousand square feet of mixed-use and residential property uptown right now. We maintain a hundred percent occupancy rates. We want to make sure that everyone is happy, including our neighbors and the residents and what we bring. We have, we have great feedback through our past and ongoing development projects. And that's, you know, community feedback. That's feedback from our planning director, our planning board, our building commissioner. We just, we were able to, to come through with big key differences based on that feedback. And we're really just focused on the community. So our key difference is mainly density. We are getting density with our project. We have five-bedroom, five-one-bedroom apartments proposed to go into the existing firehouse. We want to keep the firehouse in its entirety. So that's the original building. And then the addition, which is the three bays in the back. You'll see the remainder of the site. We left for parking. That was, was very purposeful. A number of reasons. Our past experience in redeveloping, there has been a focus on being very mindful with density. When we went to revitalize the former American Legion, we originally proposed six units. There were concerns about parking. We reduced that down to three, which was supported by the planning board. We don't, we don't want to cause issues here, which we feel is a more sensitive area than the area on Mechanic Street. So we thought any more than five apartments could cause concern for our planning board. It's also, the parking spaces allow for a buffer to the historical homes that are on the streets behind here. And we get parking that's, that's needed in this area. It's adjacent to a thriving community center that has no parking. We, we really feel that we need to take a good look at what is the best use for this back end of the parcel. Because, you know, redevelopment, new developments and improvements to the downtown should be compatible with scale, character, and architecture of Foxborough's historic and rural patterns. That's straight from our master plan. So since we are limiting our density here on purpose, it's, it's very thoughtful. We do get a quicker build. We're looking at probably a ten-month construction timeline. And that's also, we have a very dedicated and experienced workforce. So this is going to be a challenging project. We've all come up here and said that. There is a lot of asbestos in the firehouse. And that's not just asbestos in the tiles. We're talking about the filing cabinets that are left in there. There's asbestos sandwiched in between those pieces of metal. There's blankets left with asbestos weave. We could go on. This is, this is a big project to take on, but we know what we're signing up for. We've done our homework. We also, we get a, a quick timeline because we are making sure to confirm, conform to current building and zoning requirements. That's important to us. We know that when you go for a non-conforming plan, that can add a lot of time. And we all want to see this back on our tax roll. We all want to see a thriving restaurant here. I want to see action. We all want to see action in our town center again. But we want to do that with, you know, low community disruption. We also want to preserve history as best we can. Now, you all, no, we are the lowest bidder. We are offering seventy-five thousand to anyone that is able to move and preserve the funeral home. That is very important to us. We don't want to wreck history if we don't have to. It's a beautiful building. So just if you want to kind of talk about.
Sure.
The community restaurant that we'd like to bring?
Yeah, no, and again, Jimmy Brown, Partner of Kitchen Partners LLC. So I'm actually proud and excited to be representing our, our partnership group. And I think Paige and everybody's been saying how important it is to have a strong tenant at the heart of this project. We consider ourselves strong tenants already of the town and already of the revitalization of, of what we're calling Uptown. You know, with the, the launch of Union Shaw, I think we've seen that be a wild success, which is fantastic. But we've also heard the feedback coming out of the initial, I would say, proceedings for this RFP in that we don't want another Union Shaw. And we hear that loud and, loud and clear. And, and that's not our intention. Our intention is to really bring variety to Uptown, really looking at how do we bring a different concept outside of Union Shaw, but capitalize on our experience in bringing something that brings energy, vibrance, people from outside the community, as well as our residents, to our, our common area for their, their own dining purposes and needs, and actually carrying that into the project here at the firehouse. So for us, it's about communal, fun, vibrant, something that people can walk to from the common, leaving the, the tree lighting or the upcoming, you know, parade that we have on Founder's Day. And ultimately bringing something that's a little bit different to what we've already established, but growing the interest and the excitement uptown for us here in Foxborough. So we're looking at bringing something different, not the same exact thing that we've done in Union Shaw, but really leveraging our experience in understanding how our residents and how other families that we already see day to day provide feedback and what they are hoping comes into play here at this firehouse. And I think it's important to do that. I think for us as parents, as people in the community, being an ear, an open source of feedback for the other residents has proven to be actually very valuable. It's allowed for us to pivot, move, make adjustments as needed on the fly as we've launched Union Shaw. And it's something that we would continue to practice and bring to bear for this opportunity as well.
Just one last slide. This is our visual anchor. It's beautiful. I want to see its day. I want to see us mirror a strong downtown with a small rural town ambiance. And I know that this is not a public hearing, and thank you for, for clarifying that. I do ask, though, that you take the time and consideration for neighbors. I know when we were talking about the traffic concerns around the common and on Mechanic Street, there was great discussion about including neighbors, neighboring businesses. And I think it's important to do that during this as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So does anybody on the board have questions? Do we want to ask the questions now to everybody? Do we want to have some of the neighbors weigh in? I do want to give the opportunity to some of the neighbors to weigh in. The neighbors first?
Yeah.
Yeah, if anybody here from the neighborhoods or anybody has any questions, concerns, that want to come forward. Just got to sit at the table or use the mic, state your name.
Hello. I was here a couple of weeks ago addressing some of the concerns that I have with.
Just let everybody at home know.
Oh, sorry. Alison Bancroft, Twenty-Two Market Street. I actually live in the home that's directly.
Thank you.
My eyes just opened.
I live in the home that's directly across from the funeral home. I would like to speak to the board today about something different than I spoke about the last time. I have been looking at the EDC's recommendations and ratings. And I would like to ask this board to make an independent evaluation of the criteria that the EDC looked at in their submission to the board. Of the three proposals, the King Builder Group has submitted plans that don't comply with town bylaws. And his written submission, unlike that of Gibson and MPZ, gives no consideration to the town's strategy plan in terms of how it fits into the residential neighborhood. He didn't even show his residential submission to the board today. It is essentially close to a five-story apartment complex, replacing a two-story existing home. MPZ wrote in their written submission pages where they discuss traffic, where they discuss community input, and most importantly, their design. Gibson's entire plan is based around the effect of the neighbors in the current existing neighborhood. Both of, both Gibson and MPZ direct traffic away from the existing neighborhood and keep it on Rock Hill Street. In EDC's evaluation, they wholly ignore the fact that King's plan does not conform to any of the town's bylaws. They also completely ignore the fact that King's plan gives zero consideration to the residential neighborhood and its design. The plan that King proposes has two front sides, because it's a corner lot. One's on Rock Hill, one's on Market. Both are predominantly single-family, two-story homes. In King's submission, he states that his building matches Judy's Flowers, which is a common-facing commercial building that is not even on the backside of his property, but further back, and is only three stories. His building would literally tower over the area. Part A of EDC's evaluation relates to the consistency of the project vision as described in Section Two of the RFP. This states that any redevelopment should be compatible with the scale, character, and architecture of Foxborough's historic and rural patterns. King's residential proposal is not consistent with that, and yet he gets the highest rating. Part B evaluates consistency with the downtown vision and downtown strategy. The downtown strategy sets forth exactly how residential development should be handled for residential buildings not facing the common. It starts on page one-hundred-and-forty-eight and states that care should be given to ensure that these developments are compatible with the neighborhood so as not to detract from existing character or seen as negative impact. They suggest, in the downtown strategy plan that EDC claims to follow, that cottages and other small home typologies should be considered around downtown. Smaller structures allow affordable opportunity for aging populations wishing to downsize or provide starter-home opportunities. King's proposal on the residential side of this project is the opposite of that. And yet, EDC gave him the highest rating. It's also important to note that there are other parts of the EDC's criteria that appear to be completely arbitrary. MPZ and King present substantially similar financing proposals. King gets the much higher rating. I would ask that the board give an independent evaluation to all of the criteria set forth in EDC's evaluation. EDC also completely ignores any issues relating to parking. This board has sat through almost two hours of people talking about parking and traffic around the common. There was a parking study referred to in the master plan completed in two thousand and thirteen that states that the library returning may increase the amount of parking demands on the neighborhood. The libraries returned, new restaurants have opened, the theater is revitalized. The entire area is completely overburdened right now without adding a large apartment complex and resident, and restaurant that do not have sufficient parking. The Board of Selectment should be selecting a proposal not on the basis of tax revenue alone or on the basis of the EDC's recommendation. The board should be taking into account all of the considerations as to what is the best fit for everybody in the town. I ask that you read the master plan and you read the town's strategy, and you make an independent evaluation of what the people in this town want in their residential areas. Think about what the residents and businesses have told you about, traffic and parking. What the master plan and town strategy actually say is that residents and businesses in town want more convenient parking, and that care should be given to any development in any residential area. This town is picking a developer. I do understand that all projects may require some zoning changes. This board thought it was important enough to make an overlay district in two thousand and fourteen, can change the bylaws of this town. They thought it was important enough to put in its RFP that developers should be developing their properties pursuant to those bylaws. Three times in the RFP, it said that. I ask that this board not choose a developer who has presented a plan that violates the town's zoning and building codes and is unbuildable as presented, and the developer who submitted a plan that didn't follow the bylaws, the town RFP, or the town's strategy plan. The town should care about its own codes and its own regulations that it put into place for the development of the downtown area. If you don't care, other boards won't either. Therefore, I ask the board not to select the development that's proposed by Doug King. And I ask the board to evaluate what the people in Foxborough do, in fact, want independently. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I'm Linda Shay from Twenty-Two Market Street. My biggest concern is parking, to be honest with you. I don't know if you're aware, but Market Street has posted no parking on either side. And so I'm concerned about that because, you know, I'm just worried that that's going to, for especially a restaurant, end up becoming a parking area. The street is narrow. There's businesses on both sides, the bank, you know, on the side towards the common. There's the bank, there's Judy's. And then on the other side, it's all residential. And so I'm just concerned that that could be a problem. And so my biggest concern is the parking. The other thing, I also read all of the plans and master plan and overlay district information. And what I did notice is that there is a section about, and maybe this will be the planning board to address this, about if parking can't be provided on the site, that it has to be within five hundred feet, and it needs to be documented through agreement or contract that that is the case. And I'm concerned about the number of people who would work in a restaurant. One proposal is for eleven parking spaces separate from the residential units. And I would think that a brew pub or, you know, any restaurant could have eleven in And I would think that a brew pub or, you know, any restaurant could have 11 employees and that that should not be where they're parking and that they need to come up with some other plan for their employees. I believe the owner of Primo's Restaurant was here a few weeks ago with his concern about the people parking in front of his business, actually from Union Straw. And we're happy that that's a great business and it's doing fine. But again, he stated that night that there were employees parking in some of those spaces and that that was the issue. And so I hope, it's probably not you, maybe it's the planning board, but I would hope that they would get those agreements in place so that we know where they're parking. Because I don't want it to be on Market Street since we have no parking on either side. I think that was it. And just the other thing, just a thing about concept. I know we want to be like Brookline and I know Paige touched on it a little bit about how we want this to be a walkable, vibrant city, but we're different. Brookline has wide sidewalks. They actually have sidewalks on both sides of the street. They have streetlights. We have one streetlight on Market Street. They don't even plow our side of the sidewalks during the winter. So I would love us to be like Brookline too in that respect, but then we need to do all of that as well. You need sidewalks to walk on, you need streetlights you can see at night, and you need to plow the sidewalks. So that was just something else I thought of. Thank you.
Anybody else? Let me take him first.
Mark Duffy from Judy's Flowers, also a Yerres management. We own the abutting property of this project from the very top of the fire station all the way down to Market Street. We are the direct abutter to this project. We have major concerns, parking is our major concern. Right now, in the last three weeks, I've gone outside of our flower shop between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. and we have no parking as it is. Our concern is a 15-unit building is put right next door to our building, there's going to be spillover. Where are those people going to park? When they have friends visit, neighbors visit, you know, when they want to go to the restaurants, when they want to go to the theater. My concern going forward is how am I going to enforce my current 43 parking spaces? Am I going to be towing cars every night? Am I going to have to have all my tenants have stickers? It's a big concern of ours because not only do we own the flower shop, but we own the building. So if I don't have parking, I don't have tenants. So no tenants means no revenue. So at no point have I heard the board address this and what kind of effect it will have on our business, you know, and the surrounding communities. You know, the local business owners, I hear them, they're all screaming, "There's no parking." I haven't heard a solution yet. I did hear a lot of empathy before when the five of you were up here for the first, the last two hours. It seemed like every conversation was about traffic, it was about parking, it was about congestion, it was about density. But yet here we are wanting to add more traffic, more density. And there's no answers about parking, where they're going to go. We are in support of a restaurant, we'd love to have a restaurant downtown. I don't think a 15-unit apartment building is necessary, though. I would like there to be a parking, an additional parking lot to help some of our overflow. So, I mean, going forward, I know this process is going to continue, but I'd like the board to at least ask the questions before rewarding the project. Where are these people going to park? Okay, what kind of studies are going to be done that are going to help, you know, businesses like ours? And, you know, we have 43 spaces right now, but every one of those is used by our tenants. So I have to protect our tenants and protect our business. Those are my concerns.
So I think we did address some of your concerns when we actually carved out a piece of that parcel so you can still have those nine parking spots that you're using.
Nobody from the town has ever approached me on that.
Well, it's, we do have, those nine parking spots that are adjacent to the funeral home, that's town property. We carved that out of the development, so those are going to remain. So you're not losing any of your existing parking right now.
And that's included in the 43, my account for 43. And they're utilized every day. So, you know, where are these, where's the cars going to go? Where's the traffic going to go? And if it spills into my lot, do I become the town jerk by towing everybody every night? You know, by not allowing people to park in our lot every night? I don't want to do that. I mean, I got 30 to 40 years left in my life. You know, I don't want to become a traffic cop, you know, standing out there every night telling people they can't park there.
One of the things, too, we, parking has been an issue even before this and everybody knows it. No matter what goes in there, you know, if you put a restaurant, you want the restaurant to busy, to be busy, all three of these proposals, there's not enough parking. You know, everybody says there's no parking. I mean, I don't know what we can do as a town short of knocking everything down and putting a parking lot there. So there, no matter who gets it, parking, there's not a lot of difference between all three proposals when you look at how many parking spots there are. So there's going to be-
There is a difference in density, though. A big difference in density because you're adding, you're adding an apartment building with 15 units versus-
But you're talking a restaurant as well, too. I mean, if you want the restaurant to thrive, where are the people going to park?
That's a great question.
When I, that's, I've told several people when we come up to go to the Orpheum to see my son play, we park here and walk over, I mean-
I mean, that's a great question, but if that's the question you're asking is where is somebody going to park or the restaurant, well, what's the viability of the restaurant? If they're going to park at Town Hall and then they're going to walk all the way to a new restaurant? I mean, is that viable? What's the viability of the whole project? People do that in Boston all the time.
Yeah.
That's the reality of it.
Can I say something really important that our town planner is working on, which is fantastic? She's doing great work here. She's looking at Schneider Electric as allowing additional parking, which is going to be huge. We've talked about it at our Foxborough Common Business Collaborative. And in reviewing our master plan, there is some directives, some suggestion in there that when we look at future parking, as we begin to increase business, maybe employees can use parking lots that are not directly on the Common. So I think it's important that, I don't know if Paige is still here, she just- Yeah, if she, if you want to talk about if there's any ideas around having employees, you know, maybe employees at Union Straw, employees at whatever restaurant comes in here can use Schneider. I think that's an important piece as you're looking at it. I mean, I know right now over half of our parking requirements are served in the parking lot we got, but I mean, there's more parking.
Yeah, you want to talk-
Can I just add something before Paige speaks? Because I just want to say that, you know, any mixed-use development like this is going to do a traffic and parking analysis that will be part of the permitting process. You know, we wouldn't do anything where, like this gentleman, where we would introduce something that didn't work for our tenants, our residents, and our business as well. So that's a problem we have to solve. I'm acknowledging that now. I don't know the answer, but that's part of this process. And this is just the beginning of what can be a very long process to figure that out. So we're not coming here saying we have any of the solutions and we're starting this dialogue, you know. In our proposal, we considered what the overlay was and what good urban design could be here. And that's why we have a team of consultants that help us create these visions. And, you know, then we have to put them into practice. And that is the process that we undertake through zoning and permitting. So we're, I want to, my team acknowledges that and I, you know, I'm open to whatever the town is working on that could assist in that process, but this is very much the beginning of that. So I just want to say that because that's where we're coming from.
So you heard us mention previously that we are looking at parking and basically we aren't yet there, but what we've been doing is an inventory. I mentioned earlier, there's over 1,000 parking spaces. We are not, we're trying not to get too public about the possibility of the Schneider lot just because it hasn't gone through official channels. You know, we're trying not to have folks at that management read about it in the paper before it happens. That said, John Eva's here.
John.
So, you know, I'll let him speak, but there is a possibility. I know that we've been talking to Schneider and that we're doing a survey out there and there's a possibility of getting a large amount of parking. We also know we have, Matt, do you remember how many parking spaces in this lot? Was it 70 something?
71.
71. So we do know that we have collections of parking spaces. That's now getting to the point of this wayfinding project that we've been talking about is that folks don't know where they could park. To Lynda Shea's point, you know, people don't know that they can park here and walk there and they don't think about it. So that, again, is back part of this whole new sort of idea, but a lot of it goes to signage and mapping, you know, maybe an app or something, or maybe a downtown website, something like that that lets folks know when they're coming to the Orpheum or they're going to go to Union Straw, they can click on it, parking, and it will tell. But to Jessica's point, I think, too, those are the types of strategies we're looking at about, like, employees and whatnot. We're just trying to figure out, to work with the businesses. I know Union Straw, we were like, "Just get a valet company." Well, it turns out it's not that easy to just get a valet company. But perhaps with enough businesses in town, someone will enterprise and create the ability to do something like that uptown. So we are, I guess that's our point, is to ask folks to be patient. I totally understand the neighbors' concerns and I do think we need to manage this as we go through, but it is getting more successful. We are trying to adapt to it and we do believe we can. That said, you know, you do live in an uptown area. I mean, folks that are speaking here bought adjacent to a residential, a commercial district. You know, it is a different dynamic than your typical suburbs. You know, they purchased to get the benefit of that. So it goes both ways. And I think, you know, this gentleman here could speak to the fact that any project like this with mixed use in a sort of downtown or more urban area, this is our version of urban, is going to have this problem. You know, I mean, that's, that's sort of what comes to it. We could build parking lots throughout town, but we kind of, we're not going to have people. So it's like you got to have a little, a nice blend of both. So I totally understand what everyone is saying about the concerns. And I think to Kate's point, this is the beginning of it and we don't know what the final design is. We don't even know what the final heights will be. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen. So I guess that's your hard job, is vetting all this and figuring out what to do.
So I think to Paige's point, this is all conceptual. We're not doing true zoning analysis here. That's not, that's not our role. The assumption is that'll meet the zoning requirements, either the underlying zoning or the AFCOD, the overlay. It's important to note that the reason the overlay district was created was to increase density. And that allows it in the downtown area. You know, the parking, you know, in the master plan, it says a walkable downtown, okay? Well, a walkable downtown doesn't mean walking 10 feet into the store or the business. You know, we don't want people to have to walk, you know, 1,500 feet, you know, 2,000 feet to get from their car, especially in February. But, you know, there has to be a thoughtful plan and that's what's being worked on right now. You know, and it all comes down to what comes first? Ample parking or thriving businesses? So we had the same discussion with the sewer. What comes first? Do you wait for a developer to come in and ask for sewer? Or do you put in the infrastructure to bring in the development? And as we've shown, you do the infrastructure, development follows. So I think the parking with the wayfinding and, you know, really marketing what's available for parking is going to go a long way to solve a lot of the, whether the perceived or real parking issues. But this is just, this is just the first step in a process. And I hear the neighbors, I hear the abutters, but it's ultimately, you know, for the town, okay? What's in the best interest in the town? And we have to be cognizant of the neighbors. We have to be cognizant of what is going to fit in the neighborhood. And, you know, we have some conceptual plans and, you know, we got to, we got to hope that we do our job, pick the right, the right project and goes through the planning board, design review board. And at the end of the day, it comes to fruition that it's something that the town could be proud of. And I think that's what our goal is here tonight, to hear these proposals. We're going to ask some questions. But, you know, we're listening to what the neighbors are saying. We're listening to what their proposals are. I don't think anybody's going to rush into a decision. We've got a long way, a long delay. And, you know, we're reeducating ourselves with the proposals. And I, you know, for me, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. So, you know, I think, you know.
Mr. King, you seem to indicate you want to make some comments.
I was going to say the same thing, that the walkable communities is part of this whole redevelopment and build. And also with the parking at different sections, you can have shuttles that are like lodge golf carts with, take 12 people and different stuff like that that make it in, and then one day you could have sleaze and wax. Make it interesting and have the different people chugging in. All right, anybody else? Yep, can you come up to the table?
I'm Cam Gibson from Gibson Realty Trust. And you directly asked, Mr. Keegan, why we had only proposed five units in our proposal. And I wanted to really answer that. We've had ongoing projects in the town, one currently, and the Legion has been developed. In both of those projects, they didn't want that kind of density. They wanted it brought down, consideration of the neighbor, neighborhood especially, and very much consideration of managing your onsite parking. So consistency was brought up here. I feel that this is inconsistent with the development we've been doing just on the other side of the Common that all of a sudden, I've heard rumors like they're going to waive those setback and parking restrictions and they'll have to go for a special permit or it'll be a different type of building there. And I just don't understand, you know, we're bringing our experience, we were bringing to the table what we thought the town wanted because in the past two proposals, that's what we saw, that the number of apartments were cut. Legion was eight, like down to six, down to, no, you can't put up that many floors. No, bring it down. And I, it's directly off of the planning board's meetings from 2016. You know, that Paige definitely wanted a lower density. So I am just dumbfounded that all of a sudden, that there's just an about-face, all of a sudden we're on the other side of the Common and we want density and hell with the parking, kind of. And it's just, it just seems very inconsistent with our experience over the past few years.
That would be an issue with Paige or the planning board, right?
Well, I would say, to me, what is, what is different at this, what is different with this site? You want more density compared to what we've developed already? You don't want to comply with the types of recommendations? Which, I'll tell you, when we brought down the number of apartments, we were kind of sad about that. But then seeing the effect on the neighborhood, they were totally right. They were right, the parking has been a huge problem. They were right to decrease our number of apartments. So that, I really wanted to respond to your question, why do we only come in with five units? That was why. Respect for the neighborhood, managing onsite parking and keeping, you know, that beautiful vista when you look at the Orpheum Theater and the church, to keep that vista. You see it everywhere. When you turn on a Patriots game, I want to preserve that iconic view. I don't want to see four or five stories to the left there. And we live in this neighborhood and we, I mean, I walk that neighborhood on Saturday. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It's tranquil. It would be inconsistent to have this huge dense project in there.
Thank you. All right. Ed, questions of the developers or Dave, questions of the developers? If you guys all want to come up to the table, one representative from each. Do you have any questions?
One of the questions was just answered by Mrs. Gibson about why only five units? Because in this day and age, it seemed like an aberration. But based on the past experience that you had, I can understand now what the thought process is. So I appreciate that.
A perfect example is, I'm working on an apartment building right now. And when I started two years ago, that was actually a six unit. And they brought me down to a four unit. So there's an example right there, you know what I mean? And I'm in the process of doing, doing that project right now. And I'm, I'm in the process of doing, doing that project right now.
And, and another big thing we focused on is knowing the density we're getting on Wall Street. We're getting seventy units, fifty one-bedroom, the remaining are two-bedroom. I'll let you guys do the math, 'cause math is not my strong suit, but I do know, when renting apartments, one bedrooms is typically two people. Two bedrooms are typically three to four. We're getting a lot of bodies on Wall Street. I don't know that we need to go for maximum density at the firehouse.
So, Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd like to address is, I might, might be what our team is, um, if you look, so, so the vision, the downtown visioning study, which has been consistently referenced this evening, and is referenced as well in the RFP, and I could probably throw it up on the board here, and I probably should, but there is a math that goes with it. So, what they've done is they, they did, is they looked at all the areas in town for redevelopment, fill housing, I'm looking at it now, and I could, I could put it up maybe, is, um, it shows the fire station and has a mixed use, four stories, retail, residential. It shows the funeral home as four stories, residential. So, we didn't make this up. This wasn't just pulled out saying, gee, let's just max this site out. This was the vision. It showed right on the plan. So, you, and maybe it's inconsistent with some verbiage, um, but a picture is worth a thousand words. And when we're doing our proposal, you know, we're looking at the reference documents within the RFP, and we look at that and say, okay, well, the town has looked at this. They had a consultant study it, they had numerous public hearings, this is what they came up with, this is what they're referencing in the document, so this is what we came up with, except for the fact that we decided that we wanted to retain the fire station because that seemed to be an important component when talking to different people, um, of what the project should be. So, just so, it's very clear that, um, that this is in compliance with that, with the vision as stated on this plan, and we considered that. You know, we, we do understand, as Mr. Philman pointed out clearly better than I will, it's just part of the process. We're going to, um, have to go through a design review, we have to go through the planning board. The plans that you show, although it costs tens of thousands of dollars for a team to develop, these proposals you're preparing, they really are just concept plans. They've had, you know, no outside input, we haven't, we didn't talk to anybody. Here's a question, keep your plan close to your vest, you're not gonna put it out there so everybody knows what you're going to do. You wanna kinda keep it close to the vest. It still has a long way to go. Um, and as far as the discussion on allegations that our plans don't comply with zoning and, you know, we disagree. You know, this is what we do for a living. Um, we think we're very confident as we go through the process, and it's reviewed by the voting commissioner and all the town's professional staff, and their outside consultants for things like zoning, stormwater management, traffic, that becomes one of the items that we're gonna be hiring and outside consultants to look at. We're very confident that will be, that our plan will be shown to be in compliance, and maybe in some areas, we, we need to adjust because there's a lot of adjustments that can be made in the downtown overlay district, gives the planning board a lot of, um, discretion. One of the things I do wanna point out is, even though parking seems to be a big issue, I haven't looked at all the other, um, plans, but our plan complies with the parking density. We're not asking for any waivers. It complies with the density in the regulations, as it sits today. So, okay, maybe the regulations need to be revised, but we are in compliance today, and I'm guessing that the other proposals are in compliance too. And I know those regulations were rewritten, again, during, when the rezoning was done for the downtown overlay district, dozens of public hearings, meetings, I don't remember being an issue with what the consultant and the town team came up with. So, maybe needs to be looked at again, but just to be clear, at least our project complies with the parking requirements.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one thing for, about our proposal and this particular issue? Because, uh, any, an effort like this takes substantial resources, as, uh, the gentleman, this gentleman has alluded to, and we wouldn't embark on something like this unless we had guidance. And so, the overlay district was our guide, and within our proposal, we did a zoning analysis to show that our project complied, uh, you know, with the requirements. And we made a conscious decision to do a, a dense proposal, but not as dense as it could have been because of the issues that we've been discussing this evening. And again, it's a proposal, it's up for debate, uh, and conversation, uh, but we wanted to, I wanted to point that out because without that type of guidance, you know, it's really hard for, to make an investment, even in the RFP. So, we did that knowingly, and, uh, we appreciate everything the town has done to that end. And so, that's why, you know, we proposed what we proposed. It made sense for us.
Okay. David, did you have any?
Um, I'm gonna hold my questions. I, I have, I have some, I have to think about these. I'm not, I'm not ready to ask these questions, 'cause I think I can answer some of them on my own.
All right, um...
I'm looking at the time.
Okay. Um, I had a couple of, one general for all three. The twenty-one E, how extensively did you guys all look at to what was actually in there? You had mentioned it, um, so we might as well start from you guys. Like, how extensively did you guys look into and, and assess what is in there, and what is it gonna take to get it out of there?
So, we went through all the prior reports with our bank. They feel very confident we're not gonna run into issues, but they want to assure we're not gonna be running into issues. They don't think that anything there needs to be removed at this date, but they want us to do a phase one and a phase two twenty-one E to confirm that.
So, that's boring, that's intensive to...
Yeah.
Yes. So, we've...
The bank?
We figured for that. It's, yeah. I did the same thing at the, um, at the Legion.
Okay. So, you guys have no concerns?
No, not at all. The Legion, it was a hotter project than this.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. How about you guys?
It really was.
Uh, we had our LSP look at what had been previously done. Uh, we will do our own phase one and phase two analysis, uh, will be required by our lenders. We have not extensively looked at this issue, uh, but we will before moving forward, and it would be a contingency. We did make, uh, a reference in it, about it in our proposal, uh, that's something we need to study in detail, so we will do that. Uh, but this is an urban infill-type project, uh, urban conditions, um, so, you know, we're well adept to deal with them, and we're not concerned.
Okay. You guys?
Mr. Chairman, we, we, we looked at all of the studies that were done by the, the town, um, the phase one, phase two, they had a spill there, and we went so far as to hire, um, Boston Environmental, who was our consultant and actually did remediation for us at the state hospital on a lot of the buildings we built there. And we thought it was so important to look at that because it's a huge unknown, a financial unknown, and, and actually in our proposal, you'll see, I think we devoted a whole chapter to that, response to that, and we gave, we had our consultant prepare an estimate after they walked through the building, um, and also reviewed the, uh, also reviewed the phase one and phase twos, their public record right now. So, I, I think we did do our due diligence on that. We feel comfortable that we have a handle on what the cost would be to remediate it.
Okay, and no concerns then other than...
Always concerns, but I mean, we, we, we know there's unknowables, but at this point, without having, actually going in there and tearing things up, we, we have a confidence level that we, we know we're gonna find. As Mr. King said, this is what he does. So, we're doing it right now on nineteen thirty's Firehouse in Easton. We're gutting it and rebuilding it and going through the same types of issues.
Okay.
Yeah, I can say this is what we all do. This is all, we all know there's unknowns that we're gonna face, and we're ready to face them.
All right, and I just had one question for you. You had mentioned it a couple of times in your proposal, and I think I had asked you the last time you were here, the public-private partnership, um, what if we don't wanna go a public-private partnership? Is that the only way you're gonna move forward with this?
Uh, so, we have a funding gap in our sources and uses, and so, we were trying to deal with that, um, in that manner. Uh, we certainly would have to have a conversation as to how to structure that gap. Again, a conceptual proposal, very high level, uh, you know, we'd have to dig into the, the costs, costs, construction costs are rising at an unprecedented rate, and we need to kind of study that and understand exactly what we're building and close that gap, you know? Um, we, our hope is to work with the town to do that, and so, that was what we suggested in the proposal. There's a number of ways we can do that. Uh, we also offered up, um, deed restricting a, a number of the units, uh, so they remain affordable at eighty percent of AMI in perpetuity. Um, that's another piece of the work that we do that we feel is really important, creating affordable housing in communities such as this one. Uh, so, we are committed to that, and so, that's also something that's creating the gap, uh, to some degree.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask my question.
Okay. You don't care how late it is?
Nah.
He's going beyond that.
Um, for MPZ, have you, have you given any thought to reducing your affordable component to try and close that, that gap on the, on the soft money?
Uh, we could talk about that, but, you know, we prefer to come in with something as we've proposed, but, yeah.
And, uh, for the King group, have you given any thoughts to, to an affordable component?
No.
Would you consider...
We were building, uh, all one-bedroom units, and I don't know if you can get an affordable component where there's just one bedroom. And, uh, we thought that this was single occupancy, uh, so it would be the best use for this property and this location, and obviously less parking problems and less cars. But we did do an affordable component at the state hospital when we did that.
Right. Well, that's why, that's why I, I bring it up here, 'cause I know you did do it at the, uh, state hospital. Um, and I think Bill answered my other question regarding the zoning, so...
One other, um, question, I know it came up the last time you guys were all here with the, moving the funeral home, and, and you guys had addressed it, um, and I think the question was asked to you the last time, so I don't know if there's been any movement. Paige, you might be able to help me on this. Has there been any further talks about moving that funeral home? And are you guys...
We're interested in working with the town on that.
Paige, has there been any...
Yeah.
From historical, is anybody, is that still a viable option?
Maybe. Um, so, it's great that there's some possibility, then it's to find a site for the, the house to go on to. So, that's looking for a receiving site. There has been some preliminary discussions. Um, we've been, the Housing Authority's been very open to talking to us about their property on Market Street, and perhaps there's a way for the town to obtain that property for parking. And then, um, we've been discussing, there is a, a town-owned property on Centennial that, again, we haven't moved forward, but we have been talking to the Housing Authority a bit, and it looks like they've actually even checked with the state. It starts to get into whether there's, there's a, it gets logistically difficult because when the state, when you're building housing under the Housing Authority, it has to have certain energy code requirements, it has to be handicap accessible and whatnot, so they were just saying they were a little concerned that an old building might be more trouble than it's worth to try to get the units. So, that said, we basically just said we probably have to table it for right now to let this project sort of play out, but, so yes, there, the challenge is finding a place to put it. We're not sure that the Centennial lot, we still might wanna do a swap, but we're not sure moving the, the funeral home to that site is the best use of it. So, if there's anybody out there looking for a funeral home, beautiful fireplaces and stairwells, um...
Seventy-five to move it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do want, yeah, we wanna incentivize with money. It's a very costly thing to do.
Yeah, so, we had a great plan, I just don't know that we can actually implement it with the constraints of the Housing Authority, the state process, the timing, et cetera, but we are trying.
Um, Ed, anything else?
No, I'm about to think over.
Okay.
Could I just say one more thing about the infill housing? I know we're, we're all sick of talking. The infill housing diagram that Mr. Buckley had mentioned? So, there is in a diagram, and it, it does suggest some infill housing on the, um, spot where the funeral home is. Now, that was done in two thousand and twelve. Further along in the study, it shows another diagram. For once, the Boyd and Library is back, once the theater is thriving, once we start to have more revitalization, we need to readdress parking. And it says to look at shared parking as a viable option, as a strategic option to respond to it. And it says a good shared parking court could go behind Judy's Village Flowers. We know deliveries happen all day, in and out. So, where is the next best place a shared parking space, court, whatever you wanna call it, it's called a court in the diagram, could go? Where the funeral home is. It makes sense. It's all in the master plan.
Pam Gibson, again, the diagram that you're talking about, the four units, the four stories proposed, was also proposed at Ayton, Canx Street. When push came to shove...
It was in front of the Legion.
It wasn't gonna happen. So, I mean, it was a thing, and then the reality turns out to be something else.
They actually had a four-story building in the parking lot of the Union's Draw.
Right.
That, if you look at that, the same thing Mr. Buckley's talking about, that's what was actually proposed.
But then the interesting...
But it just wouldn't, it just wouldn't work. You know, it just, for the neighborhood, it just wouldn't, it just wouldn't go.
All right, um, we tentatively have this slated for possibly vote at our next meeting.
The twenty-eighth.
That's the Wednesday, right?
No, that's the Tuesday, but you can go to the Wednesday if you need to.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna shift...
We're not here on the twenty-eighth, we're not able to attend that.
That's right, that was, that's why we did, that's right, we did it for the twenty-eighth, you're right.
We have a separate meeting on that Wednesday.
So, we're gonna do it on the twenty-ninth, you're right.
So, that's the tentative plan. Um, I think we all have questions after tonight that we have to kinda reach out to different people on, so, um, I appreciate everybody's time and coming. Paige?
Can you just give an affirmation from all the parties that they are willing to extend their proposal until the end of the month? I know we've gotten a couple, we just wanna affirm that we have time to work till the mark, and for the next meeting, I'm like, I'm...
Is that good with, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in, that's in our letter. We are, we're willing to go further if need be, but we appreciate you guys accommodating the special meeting on the twenty-ninth, so thank you.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I, the, the understanding that, or the, the thought, the process was to use tonight's opportunity as a, as a dialogue between neighbors and the developers and the proposals, the meeting on the twenty-ninth is really a deliberation amongst board members. So, you'll be talking amongst yourselves, you know, certainly if there's a question, you can answer, ask a question, but it's primarily for you to decide this issue, not, not for another hearing like tonight, or a discussion like tonight. So, just to be clear about that, so I, I wanna be clear about what the expectation will be. Uh, normally, that's the process that you would do in, in deliberating that amongst yourself, and then come to a conclusion as to what the decision should be. Okay?
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? I don't think so. I don't think so. No, you're all sitting, you're all sitting.
They usually don't all go this late.
Twenty-ninth. Twenty-ninth. Okay, sure.
We're gonna stay long enough to get some of those, uh...
It's like stadium business. Yeah.
Red Sox lost.
Red Sox lost?
Yeah, eleven innings.
Oh, that's too bad. But Bruins won, so it's pretty low, it's pretty low.
One to one.
Okay, that's good.
We should be wrapping up.
So, that, that was, um, that was in, in Carolina, Carolina, right? Yeah? That's good. Bring home the cup. All right, see you later.
Have a good night. Yeah. How about the Red Sox?
Sox lost in eleven innings, eleven innings. Who'd they lose to?
Hey, everybody, we still have to finish up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Kate.
Bye, Kate, thank you.
Miss Kate. Matt, you don't wanna stay out midnight two nights in a row?
Do you think so?
All right, I think now's a good time to reorganize the board.
I don't think so. Not exactly. There's another system.
Oh, funny man.
All right, so, we'll do the board reorganization now, so I'm pretty sure the way we do it, we'll accept a nomination, vote on chairman, and then accept a nomination, vote on vice chairman. Chairman, and then accept a nomination, vote on Vice Chairman, and then.
That was correct.
That's the correct way to do it. Okay. That being said, anybody want to nominate anybody but me?
I'll nominate, I'd like to nominate Doc Elfman for, for Chair.
Doc, anybody second that? Nominated, seconded? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Congratulations.
Yeah, you're happy.
And you've been waiting for this, for this for a long time.
All right, so nomination for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Leah for Vice Chair.
I'll second that. Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Congratulations.
All right, then, I, I think it's a good learning experience to be clerk, so I nominate that O'Leary to be, to be clerk.
Second?
Low me on the total poll, sorry.
Everybody starts at the bottom.
So, under discussion, I, I don't know if the board has always done it that way, but when I came on my first time, it was.
Pretty much how it's been going on.
It's a good way to do it.
I would have kept looking too, I'm not even looking to get rid of it, it's, you know.
It's a, it's a good learning experience.
Yeah, I don't mind it at all.
The discussion we had at the polls, you said that you learned so much. Great learning experience.
It is, it is. It's a good, it's a good.
A nerve-wracking first meeting or two, but.
All right, we'll help you through it, don't worry about it, we'll help you through it.
And kicked you under the table, as these two.
So, with that though, too, is when I first came on the board, we did at the beginning of the meeting and everybody changed seats then. So, my first time as clerk, I was, well, actually, I was chairman the next meeting, so a little while. That was fun, but at least this way.
Limp your way through it.
All right, so we discussed that, all in favor of Ed being clerk?
And like my seat, though.
Now, we have to rotate seats or I'm getting out of this. I might get out of it right now.
Get out of it fast enough.
All right. So, that's set. Next up, I might as well just finish the meeting.
You may as well.
Let's go over the dates of next year's meeting. Actually, you can run that part of it. You can meet anytime you want, Doc. You're the chairman.
Yeah, I, I looked at the dates, you know, especially in September and October, I didn't see any conflict with the Jewish holidays.
The only one that I saw, and I know it's just a crazy day, is at the September meeting, is the first day of school. I know there's just a lot that goes on that day. But, I mean, I'm, of course, around, but just bringing up that, you know, I looked at the school calendar, there is a February vacation one, but there's not an April one as well, so.
So, what does September look like if we do it? So, September third is the first day of school?
Yes.
Is that the Tuesday after Labor Day weekend?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to pushing that meeting out.
The tenth. The tenth and the, there's the tenth, the seventeenth, and twenty-fourth.
Want to do the tenth and the twenty-fourth? Does that affect any of the Jewish holidays?
No, 'cause they're later in September.
That's just my birthday. I don't want to be here on my birthday. No, I'm just kidding.
Town meeting wise?
That, that doesn't happen until October, November.
Okay, so September is month of November.
I just assume, I don't like meeting the Tuesday after a holiday weekend. It seems like we always do. So, if we could avoid one of those, I'm fine with that. So, it would be September tenth and what was the next date?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Does that screw up the rest of the?
Yeah, I think we just moved the first one. I think we did the tenth and the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're probably better off doing that.
Yeah, but you'll go back-to-back for one month, and you do that again, I think, in the, in the December.
Yeah, all right, yeah, I'm fine with that then, just the tenth and the seventeenth.
We probably will, by that time, probably be looking at, you know, a strategic discussion about budgets and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So, in either late August or, or September.
Kind of thinking of August.
Late August, okay.
It seems like August.
It all depends upon how soon we can get a finance director in here, so that's gonna make a big, big difference.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody else good with the rest of those dates?
Yeah.
All right. Do we move to accept them?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so a move to accept the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Board of Selectmen meeting schedule as discussed.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thought I was taking over. Habitat. Go ahead, finish the night.
There you go. Selectmen's update. I want to thank everybody for sticking it out to Town Hall last night till after midnight. Hopefully, we get out of here before midnight. Whether you, depending on what side of anything you were on last night, it was politics at its finest, democracy at its finest, whatever you want to call it. But, I'm glad we had a quorum, it was a nasty weather night, and I was really afraid that we wouldn't even get a hundred people, so. And then, I just want to congratulate the high school jazz band for finishing third in the country. Third best jazz band in the country. Quite an accomplishment. Some great musicians. I don't think I have anything else.
I do.
Dave does.
I, I just want to reiterate something that Mike Stanton said earlier tonight. You guys didn't deserve that last night. And, you know, I'm, I'm with Mike, I think I, I should have done more to, to come to your, your defense. Bill, thirty-six years in this business, you don't have to apologize to anybody. I think you, you, you do your job with professionalism, and I think you're underappreciated. And I think you're gonna be sorely missed the day you leave. So, I just want to be on record for that. And Mike? Who cares about your experience? You've been in this town, you grew up in this town. You can't, you can't, you can't replace that. You know how this town thinks. You know how this town feels. And I, I, it was, I don't know. I, I just, I don't like the way it went down last night. It, they said it wasn't personal, but to me, it was personal. And I should have done more, and I, I just want to apologize to both of you for that.
Appreciate that. It, it does present a bit of a challenge, though, because quite honestly, the, the recommendation from the advisory committee actually overstepped their authority last night. They, the authority of the advisory committee does not set salaries. First of all, I think everybody knows that I have a contract. And that contract is set by the board, not by, not by, by town meeting or by the, or by the advisory committee. That's not their role. Your charter actually speaks to that. The town charter speaks to the issue of salaries and who sets salaries. And, and by the way, you have a compensation plan where Mike is part of that compensation plan. And he's, his salary is within that compensation plan, and he's being paid within that compensation plan. So, which was, you know, is, which was set by this board several years ago, a couple of years ago, and we follow that same plan. So, the challenge is that when they specifically said, when I think it was, one of the, the YACOM members got up and said, "Well, we specifically addressing this towards the town manager and the assistant town manager," that was beyond their authority. They did not have the authority to do that. So, that really creates a challenge because they do have the ability to recommend a smaller amount for a salary line. That's within the authority of town meeting to do that, but it's not within the authority of town meeting or the advisory committee to set salaries. And I just want to be clear about that because they actually created a problem, which, which is a legal challenge. I mean, I'm not going to get into, you know, that issue one way or the other, but it creates a, a problem as to how we fix it now. So, I just, you know, I think we have to give that some thought and maybe get some advice on that. But, it goes beyond the authority of, of what happened last night. And I, I didn't really give it a lot of thought until actually later tonight, when I started looking through the charter to see who actually sets that. And it's actually in the charter, so the town manager actually sets the compensation with the advice of, of the Board of Selectmen, which was done several years ago. So, I think, you know, it's, it's a problem that we have to try to address, I'm not sure how we address it at this point. So, I'm gonna have to think about that some more and see how we can best address it. But, it creates a problem because we don't have enough money within our budget to, to pay all the, all the, all the people in the, in the department. And, I mean, there are things we can, we can not fund, obviously, like, like an intern. But, that only comes out to be about five thousand dollars, I think, in the total. So, and what, so that still leaves us a twenty-one thousand dollar gap. So, it is unfortunate the way things rolled out last, and I'm not going to comment about that because, you know, ultimately, town meeting has, has the authority to do what they do. But, it is unfortunate that the advisory committee overstepped it by specifically citing us two, us two individuals for salary changes, which they do not have that authority. So, I just wanted to set that for the record and let people know that. But, I do appreciate the comments. I did not know that Mike was going to do that tonight, and I appreciate his comments and as I do all of you. And I know you all support that, and I appreciate your, your collective support, even though it just was a very unfortunate. I've never experienced that in my life, and I, I don't know what precipitated that or what led into that, but it just was a very unfortunate. So, that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Town manager update?
So, I just want to do, for, for the record, state that we do, the lease of the log cabin is, is now open. The, the tenants that were in the log cabin were, had left on April thirtieth, and so, we've been working with them, and they, and they've actually cleaned out the, the property this past weekend. And now, our facilities folks are in there, gonna be, you know, doing some improvements to it. But, it's gonna be available, and people can actually start submitting bids. And we have, the bids are available in our office if they'd like to make a bid. The documents are available, specifications are in our office now, and will be available until, the bids will be, have to be in our office by eleven o'clock on June tenth. And so, there, there is a minimum bid of eighteen hundred dollars per month for, and it's a three-bedroom, one and a half bath, one and a, one and a half bathroom facility, house. That's looking on Seventy-two Mill Street, so anybody wants to take a drive by it. But, I'm publicly supposed to announce that, which I'm, which I'm doing tonight, so I want to make sure you're aware of that.
Foxborough resident only type of situation?
Yes, it doesn't, not, not necessarily, it's not limited to Foxborough residents only, but it is a town property. So, it hasn't been limited, that, that limitation has not been established.
Are we able to do, are there any restrictions to be able to do a Facebook post or something, just to get it out more broadly?
We could, we certainly can do that, we can do it on, it's on our website, it is on our website now, so we can certainly either put it on a Facebook post or. And actually, we've had a local real estate agent who said, who offered to offer, advertise it for free as well. So, we're, we're gonna try and get that out on an MLS, you know, listing, so. So, it is gonna be, and it goes to the highest bidder. But, the minimum bid is eighteen hundred dollars per month. Okay? And then, secondly, the Housing Authority generator, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that, and it's because it's been a relatively complicated issue. We started out with the discussion several months ago, and we actually secured the money from the state legislature through the efforts of State Representative Barrows and.
Believe it or not, that was the easy part.
That was the easy part, yeah. And Senator Feeney was, actually, was able to get it in, and it was actually overridden by the, by the governor, but then, then reinstated by, by Senator Feeney's efforts. So, thanks, thank you to both of them for, for doing that. But, what's, what's happened is that as we get into it, turns out that the Housing Authority probably could not receive that generator based on the current wiring status and the fact that one of the buildings is actually privately owned. So, they could not actually do that quite easily. So, then the question becomes, how do we get the money to possibly use it for, and maybe the Council on Aging? Well, the money was earmarked for the Housing Authority, so that created a challenge. We'd have to change the language of the earmark, which was problematic because, because the governor actually vetoed it, so they didn't want to go through that process again. So, it actually was the Housing, one of the, not the Housing Authority, but the State Representatives efforts, the, the Chairman of House Ways and Means said, "Why don't you just get a generator that's on wheels?" And so, that was a good answer. So, we've gone through that process, the Housing Authority, they will actually buy the generator. They did have to appeal, apply for a budget amendment in their, their person, in the, in the Foxborough Housing Authority's budget through the state, which they did do this past week. And I'm just waiting for the, for the approval for that to go through. Once that happens, we can actually go out and purchase the, the generator on wheels. And we've already solicited one, which is off the state bid list. So, we should be able to acquire it if it's still there. We're hoping that it's still, but the money has to be spent by the end of this fiscal year, which is June thirtieth, so we're, we're pushing hard to try and get this done. So, that's the, the latest and greatest update on that. It's taken a lot, it's been, obviously, a very complicated issue, and I think it was you, Chris, that, that originally came up with that thought. And so, we, we are trying to follow through on it the best we can. All right. So, that's, that's the latest thing on, on that. So, Mike, if you would just.
On the generator, we know that Janet Kennedy is probably at home watching us still.
That's right.
Even though it's approaching midnight, because she comes to every one of the monthly Council on Aging meetings where Bill and I go, and she hounds us about this. So, we haven't forgotten, we've told her that every month. So, Janet, your generator should be coming. Just two things. The first one, I was at Student Government Day, preparation down at the middle school today with the seventh graders. It was a really an enjoyable experience. The, the, there's about forty of these youngsters that'll be coming here to, to this room on June fourth. They've been, last week, they met with our Veteran Service Officer, Ally Rodriguez. I think it was the week before, they, they met with the town planner, Paige Duncan. They, the first administrator they met with was, was Bill, was there about a month ago. So, they go and, you know, they meet with a bunch of the department heads and, and officials here. And so, we look forward to having them on June fourth.
Did they do a tour at the, at the election tour? I saw a group of about forty seventh graders.
They.
It's a quick election tour.
Yes, I, I believe that was down, the, one of the teachers did talk about, talking about the election process with them. And so, just a, a great group of, you know, of students and the guidance of some fantastic teachers. Fantastic question. The other thing I, I, I do feel compelled to speak to, and, and I'm so glad that, that we have the support of this board, the support of the, the staff and employees, and Amanda who's here, you know, very late many of these nights. And Mike Stanton getting up and speaking tonight, and, and I feel privileged to work under, under a great leader who I think has, has served this town very well, and I hope continues to. I said at the last selectmen's meeting, when, when my credentials were being questioned and, you know, salary, et cetera, that I would not speak, you know, to defend my own salary at that meeting, nor would I do it at town meeting, and, nor did I. But, I do feel compelled to say that I'm doing two jobs. And I haven't had anyone come to me and say that I haven't followed through on my human resource director position, nor have I followed through on the assistant town manager responsibilities. And the first time I'm called out on that, I'll be looking for other employment. I love, no, no, I mean that. I, I, I'm a dedicated employee, as Bill is, I'm not looking to leave, and, and I don't believe Bill is either. We love working for this town, we love this community. But, you know, if there are folks out there, and I say this because last night was the fourth public meeting where my credentials and experience were called into question. And, you know, if there's an issue, I'd like the specifics, I'd like people to come to me and let me know. You know, I'm all set here, because there are people out there looking desperately for people with his skills and my skills. Just like we're looking for the skills in a new finance director. So, you know, not about my money, but I just want to know that, love working here, but, you know, if I don't meet the criteria of what's needed, no, that's okay. So, again, love working here and appreciate all the support I do get here.
One, one last thing, thanks, Mike, for saying that. The Memorial, the Memorial Day celebration is slated for nine-thirty. And it will be followed by a light lunch at the VFW, and a step-off location is usually at the, at the TD Bank, is that where it is, or is it?
I thought they moved it down to the church.
Down to the church?
Yeah.
Okay. To St. Mary's Church?
No.
Emmanuel?
Church of Emmanuel.
Church of Emmanuel, okay.
Further down.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to.
So, that's on Monday.
Yeah, Monday, the actual Memorial Day, which is May thirty-first?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, okay. Yeah, twenty-seventh, I'm sorry.
Doc will be speaking.
Yeah. That's right.
Very good.
The clerk speaks, too.
Yeah, just for the warning, right?
Yeah.
All right. So.
All right.
Thank you.
We did all the action items, right?
Yep, we did them all, yep.
I'll make a motion, we go home.
Yeah.
Second? Who was in favor?
Make a motion, I go to bed.